I would like to call the regular meeting to order. Just as a courtesy to others, please silence your cellphone during the meeting and engage in conversations outside the chambers. Again, thanks to everybody for coming in. There is overflow seating in the back, and I know we have a lot of folks that are here to hear the issue about the fallen heroes and our tribute to lifeguard Benny Holt. And before we start that, Madam Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Bragg?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Bill Bray?
Here.
Mayor Dedina?
Here.
Councilmembers Patton and Spriggs are absent.
And then, we have, I think, two students here. Melissa Rodriguez, Martinez, and Sophia Delaune, students from Berry School, who will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. And just, you know, I was in the first class of Berry Elementary School in 1972, in January. I started going there when it first opened, so very glad to have some fellow Lama Berry School. If you can come up here and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible)
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic
for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Melissa's in the sixth grade on Safety Patrol. She is also a reading buddy. She has a great attitude and is a hard worker. She loves soccer and is a fast runner. And Sophia Delaune is in the sixth grade as well, is student council president. She's also on Safety Patrol. She also has a great attitude, and she loves Batman, always wears her Batman sweatshirt. Just, you know, we're working with the Qantas Club to make sure that Students of the Month, who are awarded Students of the Month, each have an opportunity to help recite the Pledge of Allegiance here at the council meetings. And then, also, if you have an organization in town that has worked with local youth and like to have them have the possibility of reading the Pledge of Allegiance, we'd love to have them give that opportunity. We're trying to make sure we reach out to everybody in our community. So, thank you, Melissa and Sophia. Thank you very much.[187.62][187.62](Applause). Are there any agenda changes?
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I would like to motion that we would take item 5.1 right after our consent calendar. I'd like to move item 4.2 ahead of item 4.1.
Okay. Do we ... second. Do we vote on that?
Motion carried unanimously by those present.
Any other agenda changes?
Yes, sir.
Well, I'd like to move ... wait, hold on. Make sure. And then, I'd like to propose that we take item number 5.1 after the consent calendar. Make a motion to take number 5.1 after the consent calendar. So, item on the library?
Yes, that was part of my motion.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. All right. Thank you very much, then. All right. Okay. Now, we move on to the report parts of the evening. Any council member who would like to provide any reports or updates, starting with Council member Bragg?
Thank you. I do have a list of activities that I had been at in the last week, but I have to say the most important thing is you all being here. So, thank you very much for attending our meeting this evening. It is great to see a packed house. It doesn't happen often enough. Thank you. Give yourselves a round of applause. Awesome.[302.14][302.14](Applause). We had our budget workshop last week on May 13th. It was chaired by Mayor Pro Tem Bill Bray. Our mayor was out of town, and there were many members of the community. And it was a great presentation by our finance administrator, Doug Bradley. And it was presented in an easy format for anybody to understand. I believe it's on our website. If you have any questions, we will have two more passes at it before it is approved. I did want to state, make no mistake, it's a tight budget. It's like putting on a pair of pantyhose. Not a lot of wiggle room in this one, but it's a good budget. On May 14th, I attended our MTS meeting as your representative to MTS. We did approve the operating and capital budgets with no change to fares. So, that was really important to us. And some of the ... I just want to very briefly cite some of the concerns for the 2016 budget. Of course, the economy, federal reauthorization of funds, energy pricing, pricing from SDG and E, and the low-floor cars use more energy. That rate went up 25 percent. Our ADA para-transit service levels are increasing at 8.5 percent per year. That's our most costly service that we provide, but it's an incredible service. It is a curb-to-curb service. And if anybody in the community needs that service, please let me know. I'll make sure you get the information. The other thing that's really interesting to me, to the South Bay, is after all of my harping on this, they are really starting to look at trolley capacity constraints on the blue line. That may mean more frequent service. It may mean a fourth car at certain hours of the day. So, MTS is really looking at capacity on the blue line. Of course, it is the strongest line in the whole system. And then, at Sandag, we approved our local transportation fund. That was the fund that we had some expenditures that we had to. Sandag contacted, the city of Imperial Beach contacted Greg Wade. Those funds had been expended, and the surplus was returned back to the fund. And May 29th is Bike to Work Day, so I'd like to encourage all of you. And if you can't take your bike, at least take public transportation that day. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Bill Bray?
First, I want to thank again everybody for being here. Some definitely Imperial Beach legends here, so I really, really appreciate it. And so, I know a lot of us in the ocean community have been, and just in general, Imperial Beach has been very concerned about the impact of ... it was great to have rain, but every time it rains, especially in the spring, during south swell season and south wind season, we get a plume of water out of the Tijuana River that moves north. In this case, that plume moved north to Coronado, and you can track that plume online. There's a Scripps Institution Oceanography Tool. The only good thing about this is that there's a team of folks in Imperial Beach, in the county, and on both sides of the border, who are really on our side of the border, who have been working very, very hard to make sure that a diverter channel, a diverter pipe, in the flood control channel, right at the boundary line, is getting opened, and that water gets sucked out of that river, so we no longer have that flow reaching the coast. As of today, and so, there's been a dialogue behind the scenes with the International Boundary and Water Commission and the Mexican government authorities in Tijuana to get that open. The last email I saw was at, I think, 4:30 today. Steve Smolin from the International Boundary and Water Commission said that authorities in Tijuana were working on getting that diverter pipe open. The Silver Strand was just open. Coronado was open, I think, yesterday. But it's really important to close our beach quickly, but get it open really quickly and get that diverter pipe turned on when the water flow goes below 25 million gallons, the equivalent of what's 25 million gallons a day. I've been traveling a lot last week. I was in Washington for an ocean conference and took the time to go meet Senators Dianne Feinstein, Congressman Juan Vargas, Congressman Scott Peters, and Congresswoman Susan Davis, who used to represent IB. Congresswoman ... Congressman Juan Vargas does represent Imperial Beach, and Scott Peters is just north of here, like literally just north of Carnation. That's his district, to make a very, very strong pitch for helping us deal with some of the needed upgrades we have in infrastructure on the border. It was also good to thank Senator Feinstein in person for helping us get the secondary sewage treatment plan. And I know Councilmember Bill Bray, you had helped, you spoke at the inauguration for that a few years ago, so it was great to thank her, and it has actually made a difference. So, the big issue is, we're actually getting a ... we're doing a lot more to sort of deal with beach closures, and thanks to our lifeguards and Chris Helmers here. We've got some of the most knowledgeable people working on this issue and understand how to deal with it. Also, thanks to the county of San Diego. Greg Murphy's here, but Greg Cox, Supervisor Cox, has been our biggest advocate in the county, and the county Department of Public Health, Environmental Health, has been really, really armed as well. When I came back from Washington, I went to Tijuana and talked about this issue specifically and showed photos of what we need to improve to the North American Public Meeting and the North American Development Bank and the Border Environmental Cooperation Commission. And that was ... everybody gets it. They understand we need to move forward and work cooperatively with Mexico to make this happen. I talked with the EPA as well, and the NAD Bank is actually going to fund some infrastructure upgrades in Tijuana that will hopefully help us, but we need to do a lot more. And then, today, I was in Tijuana, again, talked to a representative from the state of Baja California, and made it very clear that I'll be traveling to Washington in September. Actually, yeah, I think it's, or actually in October, with this trip with Jerry Sanders and Kevin Faulkner and with a group of folks in Mexico, that I expect to have us hammer out a plan for infrastructure upgrades with the EPA and the IBWC before we go there, so we can meet with Senator Feinstein's staff, and hopefully the senator, to make it very clear what we need to do in the next two years for the budget cycle. So, the mythology of Imperial Beach is that we can't do anything, and I think we all understand that there's actually a lot we can do. We're the ones that are most affected, and we have to be the ones in the driver's seat making it very clear to agencies, the local, state, and federal level on both sides of the border, that we expect nothing less than clean beaches 365 days a year. There is absolutely no excuse for us to be discharging water in the ocean anymore. We're in a period of climate change and extreme drought, so we should be reusing every gallon of all that water we've been discharging in the ocean. So, that's my report, and I promise you that this is the thing that I've been working on the most since I was elected in November. So, thank you.[718.43][718.43](Applause).
I think, do we have any announcements from staff?
We do, Mayor. I think that the Assistant City Manager has something to say, and then I've got a couple of things as well.
Yes, Mayor and Council, and members of the community, we have a special Thailand's Advisory Committee meeting this Friday, 22nd, at 3:00 PM in these council chambers. The Port District is working on their capital improvement program for fiscal year 2014 to 2018, and one of the projects identified in that program for Imperial Beach is a feasibility analysis to study the possibility of a restroom in the South Sea Coast area, restroom and shower facility. It's something that's been talked about for many years. It's a feasibility study has been conducted, and they are presenting the report as well as some potential options for if there is going to be such a facility, where it might be located. So, if members of the community are interested in that, that's Friday at 3:00 PM in these council chambers. Look also for a design review board meeting and a following city council meeting at which that feasibility analysis and that project will be discussed.
Great. Thank you very much. Any other notices?
Yeah, Mayor and Council and Community Speaker Atkins, who represents the 78th District, which is, which Imperial Beach is included, would like to make an announcement that on Thursday, May 28th, from 5:00 to 6:00 PM in the Imperial Beach Library, she will be here to discuss the state legislative issues that will affect the community. And so, everyone's invited. You can come out. You can find out what kind of legislation is being proposed that may affect Imperial Beach and our area. And then, also, the speaker is going to be holding a public protection town hall. That is for crime prevention, for fraud, scam, theft, all those kinds of issues. That will be held on Friday, May 29th, from 11:30 AM to 1:00 PM at the North University Community Library. That's located on 8820 Judicial Drive in the city of San Diego. And so, those are two items that the speaker would like you to be aware of. And then, I've also been given the great privilege on behalf of the Mayor and Council to read the following proclamation, very small print. Greg Wade has served the community as Community Development Director and Assistant City Manager for the city of Imperial Beach for more than 14 years. And the city of Solana Beach has recognized the skills and abilities of Gregory Wade and has appointed him as their new city manager. And the mayor, city council, staff, and residents of Imperial Beach wish, desire to thank Gregory Wade for his significant contribution to the city of Imperial Beach, which will have long-lasting positive effects on the community for many years to come. And his many specific accomplishments include, but are not limited to, the big-picture study that was the foundation for over a decade of progress in Imperial Beach, beginning standards for the conversion of apartments to condominiums, significant zoning changes to foster economic and mixed-use developments, creation of the new Pier South Hotel in C-180, Palm Avenue Street End, award-winning Palm Avenue improvements, ecotourism study, new housing such as American Legion and Habitat for Humanity projects, clean and green housing improvements, leadership on redevelopment projects, and the phasing of out-of-state-funded redevelopment and preservation of millions of redevelopment dollars and assets for Imperial Beach projects. And his work will continue to guide our city and bear fruit in efforts such as another hotel, Bikeway Village, improved housing and neighborhoods, condominiums at Barnardo Shores, and other improvements throughout Imperial Beach. And Gregory Wade's contributions to Imperial Beach go way beyond the specifics listed above and include his outstanding traits of leadership, vision, humor, intelligence, and perseverance. Therefore, be it resolved that I, Serge Dedina, Mayor of the city of Imperial Beach, California, together with the city council, wishes to proclaim Wednesday, May 20th, 2015, as Gregory Wade Day in the city of Imperial Beach, and present this proclamation to Greg Wade for his untiring service, effective leadership, and love for the city of Imperial Beach. Furthermore, the mayor and city council want Gregory Wade to know that he is always welcome in Imperial Beach and wish him the best of luck in his new position and throughout his life.[990.13][990.13](Applause).
It's been a pleasure to work with you this short time, but I've actually been working with you for a long time, Greg, and I talked to a bunch of the surf community up in Solana Beach. They're very excited about having you come up there. We have a long tradition of sending very, very qualified, distinguished staff from Imperial Beach, including Barry Johnson and David Ott, up to Solana Beach. So, it's a nice tradition, and we're going to miss you greatly. Any other words? Oh, okay.
If I may, I just, I want to thank you. And leaving a position I've had for 14 years is almost like going on vacation, except you're not coming back. And I just found something in my file the other day, and it was dated May 5th, 2000. It was a letter we sent out as part of the big picture to get input on that project from the community when I was working as a consultant. Thought it was kind of fitting that it just kind of rose to the top of one of my many stacks. But I'm going to miss this community. I'm going to miss everybody I've worked with and for, and none of anything I've done, I've done alone. It's all been at the hands and the direction of great city councils, great mayors, great council members, great community members, some of whom disagreed with me on many occasion, but that's part of the process. And also, staff. That's the difficult part about leaving, is I've fostered some really neat relationships here that I will continue to take with me, and it's going to be difficult, but I've loved every minute of it, and I'm quite proud of this city and the community, and this community should be proud of itself. So, thank you.
Great. Thank you very much.[1108.01][1108.01](Applause). Any other announcements?
No, sir.
And now, we move on to the public comment period of the evening. And just to remember that the city council welcomes public comment, but because of the Brown Act, which is a state law, city council cannot respond to items not listed on the agenda. So, issues requiring a response, we refer to the city managers. So, remember, it's not, if we look like we don't, we're being stone-faced, it's not that we don't care, it's legally we can't actually respond. And for those of you watching on YouTube, this meeting is streamed live on YouTube, free of charge, right? Free of charge? Please remember that as well.[1144.24][1144.24](Laughter). And Madam, I'm sorry, we do have some speaker slips. And just to make sure, if you'd like to speak for the issues of the presentation of the Medal of Valor for Iraq and Afghanistan and the fallen heroes, and then also for the proclamation for Benny Holt, if you're not part of the official formal presentations and you'd like to say something, just for our sake and for public record, just fill out a blue card, and we'd love to hear from you as well. So, with that, I have Sharon Cobb. And please remember, just to state your name and your address, and speak into the mic to us as well. Thank you very much. And you have three minutes.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Sharon Cobb. I live at 1116 Eldar Avenue. On behalf of Imperial Beach Qantas and the chairperson for the Imperial Beach Kids Fishing Derby, I wanted to thank the Port of San Diego, because I recently applied for a grant through the Tidelands, and I was graciously given it. Looking forward to spending that money for the kids in our community, and also hoping to invite other kids and families from other communities to come and enjoy Imperial Beach. It'll be a great day, and invite all of you on August 15th at 8:00 AM to come and enjoy it with us. Thank you.
Thank you very much.[1224.63][1224.63](Applause). Now, we have June Engel. Thank you. Everyone's welcome to sit down if you'd like to. It might be easier.
Anyway, hi, I'm June Engel. I'm the branch manager at the Imperial Beach Library. Chris, would you come down here, please? Yeah, yeah. So, I'm at 810 Imperial Beach Boulevard. First of all, I want to start by saying a big thank you to Greg Wade for all his support and help over the years to get us where we are today, this day, on the library project. And I know that you were a big help in that, and thank you very much, Greg. Secondly, I want to thank Lori Bragg. When she came to our volunteer recognition, to this day, we're still talking about how well you spoke that night. And one of the things that we did that night is we honored one of our volunteers of the year's or Service Leader of the Year, who just happens to be here. This is Chris Demongus. Over the last couple of years, I've had the opportunity to attend several ROTC competitions. They're unbelievable. I don't know my right from my left, but it's just great what I do, and he was all part of that. What he does there is nothing compared to what he did for us at the library. We always know that he's our go-to person. If we need somebody in a clinch, he's very helpful. He's so patient with the kids and even the older seniors. So, he's just a wonderful guy, and we're really excited that you got that, and I wanted to recognize him publicly for his efforts. He's our Service Leader of the Year.
Great. Thank you.[1303.08][1303.08](Applause). Now, we have Kevin Tilden.
I'm Kevin Tilden with California American Water, 1025 Palm Avenue. The mayor mentioned extreme drought in his comments, and we're the water provider here to want to let all the people here tonight and all the people watching know that there'll be an open house at our office tomorrow night at 1025 Palm Avenue at 5:00 PM. We'll have free conservation information, rebate information. People can sign up for Waterwise House audits, and we'll have information about how the recently approved State Water Resources Control Board regulations apply to Imperial Beach. As people, I think many people know, the governor asked for 25 percent water use reduction statewide, but they did not apply that equally to communities, and it was based on a reduction from 2013. So, this area is actually asked to reduce water use by 8 percent from 2013 use, and we've just about already reached that level. So, people need to keep up the good work, but if they have any questions about how it applies to them or how we can help reduce their water bill, we'll be there tomorrow night at 1025 Palm Avenue. But they can also go to our website. We have a kind of a special URL we set up, CaliforniaAndWater.com/drought. And then, you'll just click on your air, and it'll tell you how to get rebates, who to talk to, all that stuff. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much.[1382.51][1382.51](Applause). I don't have any more speaker slips. For that, we'll move on to the presentations portion of the evening. And now, I have Agenda Item 1.1, and that's Presentation of Proclamation on Elks Lodge Number 2011, Medal of Valor for Iraq and Afghanistan to honor fallen heroes from Imperial Beach. So, with that, if I had the Ladies Luxurially Military Order of Purple Heart Unit 19, the Chula Vista Marine Corps League Detachment 1207, please give your presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and council members, for recognizing and honoring Imperial Beach's Gold Star families this evening. Our nation and our communities need to remember our fallen heroes and their sacrifices, but it, just as importantly, we need to remember their families and what they have lost. I am here this evening with Armita Martinez, a local Gold Star mother, who has been dedicated in her efforts to honor the memory of not only her son, Michael, who was killed in action in 2007 in Iraq, but all of the 14 fallen sons from South Bay. And also, Kim Coronado, Veterans Chair at the Chula Vista Elks Lodge, who is going to present the Elks Medal of Valor. Kim? You want me to read this? Okay.
So, my name is Kim Coronado. I'm from Chula Vista Elks Lodge 2011. And a while back, I read that the Elks Lodge was presenting medals of valor for those that had fallen in Iraq and Afghanistan. As soon as I saw that, I said, I have to be part of that. So, I worked with Marine Corps Detachment 1207 and with Cheryl at Purple Heart, and we found out who these gentlemen were. So, at this time, Armita will read off the first name and will present the medal.
This evening, we are being assisted by Mar Vista High School Navy Junior ROTC cadets. Their instructor, Doug Hatfield, who is with them this evening, was also James Treber's instructor. As I read the fallen hero's name, a cadet will bring their photo forward. And will the family of Sergeant James M. Treber please step forward? If any family friends are here, please stand. James was born in 1984 in Hawaii and graduated from Mar Vista High School, where he participated in the junior ROTC program. He was motivated by a fierce competitor streak and always wanted to be the best. James, a Green Beret, died on the night of June 29th, 2008, at the age of 24, when his armored truck toppled into a canal in southern Afghanistan. The soldiers struggled to free themselves in the darkness as the water level rose. One of James' last act was to free another soldier from his seatbelt and give him his air pocket. James was on his first combat tour. Receiving the Medal of Valor is James, honored by his brother, Gordon.[1591.01][1591.01](Applause).
You're sure? Thank you very much for this, for your sacrifice, and for all that your family's gone through. Your brother was a real hero.
On behalf of the city of Imperial Beach and the community of Imperial Beach and all our veterans that are here and the military community, we just wanted to make sure that you could, we definitely honor your brother and appreciate you being here and the sacrifice that your brother made for our country, and we have this proclamation for you as well. Thank you very much.
Would you like to say anything?
Well, my brother always tried to be the best that he could be. And it definitely shows. He's my true hero, overall, everything, and everything he tried to do. And ROTC with Commander Hatfield, and just being there for his friends. His friends were his family as well as mine. And I don't know what else to say about James. It's just he was a great guy and a person and a brother. So, I thank you.[1691.13][1691.13](Applause).
On behalf of Congressman Juan Vargas, I am here to present a proclamation to Gordon Treber, honoring your brother, James, for the tremendous sacrifice he gave to the United States and for all of us. So, I'm just going to, everything. On the very bottom, as we look at, in honor of his sacrifice, we call upon Congressman Juan Vargas, that on this day, May 20th, we remember and honor the memory of SFC David Metzger, Sergeant James Treber, who suffered this sacrifice for his recovery. I do have ... Okay, we'll do it.[1764.86][1764.86](Applause).
Is the family of Sergeant First Class David E. Metzger here tonight? Or if it are friends, please stand. Or if our friends, please stand. I'm gonna go, yeah, come on in. I'm gonna read about Metzger. David grew up in Imperial Beach and graduated from Mar Vista High School. Friends and family recall Metzger as a talented little league pitcher who aspired to be professional baseball player before injuring a knee. He was also a skilled boxer, skateboarder, and a gifted artist. David always seemed to be destined for the military. David, a Green Beret, died on October 26, 2009, at the age of 32, in Afghanistan, when his helicopter crashed while conducting a combat mission. David was on his third deployment in Afghanistan. The Medal of Valor will be given to his family at a later time.
That concludes our presentation for the evening. Thank you.
We have these proclamations for the family, Mr. Trevor, and then. Thank you very much. I want to thank the cadets. Thank you so much, the cadets. Appreciate you being here and all, again, all our veterans and members of the military community and the community, of course, members of the family. Memorial Day is this Monday. There'll be an event at Veterans Park at 10 o'clock. And I want to thank our members of our military community and for organizing that. Appreciate it. Appreciate your presence here. It's always important to acknowledge and honor members of the military and those who have fallen and those who have served. So, thank you very much. And I made a huge mistake that I'm gonna humbly apologize for. I forgot Andrea, is it Wagsland, a public comment. I am so sorry, and I know you're standing there with your beautiful baby. So, I am humbly apologizing to have you do the request to speak. Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Andrea Wagsland, and this is my son Desmond. We are just here as a reminder to speak for the bringing a healthy grocery store option to Imperial Beach. Currently, we drive way too far to go to either Vons or we go to Suzy's Farm and actually pick our own food. So, we would really like to see the money that is going to a grocery store stay in the community. I know a lot of people want a Whole Foods or Trader Joe's, privately owned companies, and I think it's important to at least look at some other options, whether it's a food co-op or something where we don't, where we're thinking about how the money is coming in and staying in Imperial Beach. So, I'm here to remind the committee also to keep watch on the farmers market. Currently, it's sort of more about food vendors than actually purchasing produce. There's only two stands. There's like an orange stand and then some green beans sometimes. The selection is just really minimal. So, I just wanted to put attention to kind of an interim, like what are we gonna do until then? Are partnerships going to be made to have, you know, more produce or fresh food? I want to know, kind of, I just want to have a continued conversation about what the plan is for bringing fresh food to Imperial Beach. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you very much. Now, we have Item 1.2, Sheriff's Department Update on Crime Statistics, and Sheriff Lieutenant Brown will give that update presentation. Thank you.
Hi. Greetings, Mayor, Council, and citizens. This is gonna be brief. I just want to give an update on the crime stats. A few weeks ago, I participated in the open-air open house, and I met a number of citizens and a lot of them have been here a long time. And one particular man had only lived here a year or two, and he started asking me what that he'd heard or after he moved here with my coworkers, that the town had been a rough town, and he felt he was in the safest place he'd ever been in the county, and he wanted to know what changed. Started to research a lot of it. A lot of crime stats have come out at the, this time of year. They come out usually in March for the 2014 year, and then we keep a very close eye month to month. And I wanted to bring your attention to kind of what I've found in the four or five months I've been here as your city's top cop. And what I think, I hear from a lot of people that I speak to, they want to know, he wanted to know what changed, what catalysts made it different. And I told him, I think, if you look at the numbers, it was brick by brick for probably 10 or 15 years, but that a lot of this has come to fruition in probably the last 10. So, it's probably a million decisions. It's not necessarily entirely, law enforcement can't take the credit. It's a lot of things, decisions you've probably labored on over here, things, people in the community, changes. But I want to show you a few slides and some statistics and some things to be proud about and to change some of the perception. Now, some of this is in the newspaper. One thing I wanted to preface it with is Part 1 crimes are all crimes, all violent crimes and all theft-related crimes. They're crimes where there's a victim. So, you wouldn't necessarily see DUI appear in these crimes because a particular law enforcement agency can choose to make more of these or make less of these. These are where there's a victim, there's no way to change the statistics. It's what the FBI uses as a measure of the crime rate. This is a combination of all Part 1 crimes, be they violent or nonviolent. And you can see that in 2005, the number in Imperial Beach was 922 total. There were 922 total Part 1 crimes, roughly, and that number's running, runs about what's called a 30. So, based on the amount of people that are in it, it's how many crimes per thousand people per year. At the end of 2014, we hit 528. Our crime rate got below 20, a 19.79, I believe, and it's the lowest crime rate in the history of Imperial Beach. These crime rates are below 1950s levels. And 1950s levels aren't accurate because they didn't include domestic violence, which are included here. So, you really can't compare apples to apples with the 1950s and 60s. The crime rate has plummeted here, and the next slide is going to show you how we look against our neighbors. Now, everyone's doing well. Countywide, we're down to 35-year lows if you added everybody in the county. But if you look at all of the cities south of Interstate 8, Imperial Beach now has the lowest crime rate of any city south of Interstate 8. We are, we narrowly beat Chula Vista, and for the first time in all the tracking I could do, we beat Coronado. And by a considerable margin, almost 20%. Coronado is our best comparison city because we have tourists, in fact, there's more tourism now than there probably ever was. Tourists hurt your crime rates statistically. Del Mar has the worst crime rate in the county because you, they do, and they always will because they only have 3,500 registered voter official census residents, and there's probably 15,000 people there at any one time, sometimes swelling to 30,000. So, those crimes get divided into the population. So, tourist areas take a beating while places that no one visits benefit from that. And so, you want to compare yourself to other beach communities. Coronado's a good one. 10 years ago, they had about the same population. IB had about the same population, and they're almost a tie. There was a couple thousand difference between the two towns. And 10 years later, they still both pretty much have the same populations. So, their numbers were pretty much stable. You can see in 2005, they had 549 Part 1 crimes, and in 2014, they had 562. Nothing to be alarmed about. It's about the same, and that is a safe number. But Imperial Beach went from 922 to 528. So, you can't just say overall as a national whole, crime rates went down. They didn't. They went down here, they were stable next door. If you compare us to every other area, and the only one that's a little bit different is San Diego Police. I didn't put up there, they're running about 24, but they combined Rancho Bernardo and La Jolla with the South Bay with the central area. It doesn't, the FBI won't break out their numbers, but we beat them, and that's them pulling in other stats as well. So, we beat all the other cities, National City, La Mesa, El Cajon, Coronado, Chula Vista, and Lemon Grove. It was our best year on record, but that's not the best of the news. Next slide is our last slide. The numbers in orange represent 2014, that record-breaking crime year, the year we took the title of safest city south of the 8. Number in gray are the first four months of 2015. We are running at 50% the crime rate of what 2014 was. If these numbers hold, and we do always see a summer spike due to tourism added people to town, but if we can hold the 50% clip, we will easily be the safest city in the San And there's actually four cities right ahead of us, just a couple, two points, Carlsbad, Solana Beach, and Encinitas. And the one city that no one's knocked off in the 25 years I've been doing that is Poway. If we hold these numbers, we might just inch them out. So, these are something I'm really excited about. It's not just me, it's not just the patrolman on the street, it's, well, none of it's me. The patrolman on the street, it's the town, it's the people, it's who's here. There is some change in the mood, there's a change in the way people behave. We get a little crime wave, and we go after it. I remember when I first got here in January and February, there was 27 cars had been broken into in the first six weeks, seven, five weeks of the year, and that's a big deal, and everybody took it seriously. And we went to all the neighborhood watches, and we hooked up with all the people, and we did a few other things, and we use an analyst, and the sheriff's department has just a couple of styles that are new, some strategies that are new. They're very intelligence-driven, and we were able to catch the four people, it was only four people doing this, and we did not have a single vehicle break-in, residential break-in, or commercial break-in for the next three weeks. They were literally, we're the only people committing a crime. Statistically, I only get 500 things. 10 people can do 500 things in a given year. So, it's just down to a few left. So, everybody helping people that report things, people that please lock your cars. Two-thirds of all thefts from vehicles are from unlocked vehicles with wallets or phones laying in the front seat, windows down. But we got the word out, and they started doing it, and it stopped. And we went the next month with only two. So, I'm real excited. These are things to be proud of. I'm, everybody in the sheriff's department knows this, but I wanted to come tell you this because I don't think it gets out so much in the public, and we were hesitant to jump up and down because we weren't sure how long it would hold, and now we're, I mean, we're coming up on 18 months of this constant trend. So, it's something to be proud of, and it's something that everybody should take credit for, and the reputation of IB moving forward, you can, I think, will be very different from that of years gone by. Thank you. Thank you very, thank you very much.
Do my colleagues in the council have any comments on that or anything I would like to? I wanted to thank you first for all the great work you're doing. I was on the sheriff's community advisory group, and just saw the great work that you got the sheriffs do on crime prevention and use of GIS to really detect crime and patterns in crime. That was really, really smart. And then, more importantly, it's a great presentation. Thank you. Very easy to follow and very well, well done. Thank you very much. And now, we come to Item Number 1.3, Lifeguard Service Update, and Lifeguard Captain Robert Stabinell will give a report on the item. And just to note, I actually worked with Robert when he, the first summer, he actually worked as a lifeguard, so it's a pleasure to see you here.
It's a pleasure to be here, Mayor, Dina, and council. It's always exciting when I get to come and share with everybody the, what we're doing up at the beach, accomplishments we made. Sheriff, outstanding in last year. It's gonna hard to beat that. But in the last summer, I think most people agree, last year is on record the warmest year on record for San Diego. We felt it at the beach. We felt it with the beach attendance. We felt it with the amount of activity we're having in the water. And it came springtime, and Sergeant Art Ayala started tabulating all our stats. We still do this by hand, so it takes him a little while to get it done. But it was, I think it was in February or March, he shows me what we did, and I was astonished, how many rescues we made, what's the population we had at the beach. And I like to share that with everybody today if I could. 2014 statistics, ocean and beach attendance was 2,000,006. That's the, not the record for us, but it was very close. This is all the attendance on the beach, the pier, the street ends, the parks. It's not at one time, so you think that's a lot of people, but throughout the day, this population's going, coming and going. Another thing with the weather, one weather, we didn't have the rain last year. That contributed to the ocean closures, the amount of closures we had where people couldn't enter the water. Those days are the toughest as a lifeguard. We go there because we want the people to enjoy themselves, we want them to do it in a safe manner, and we're there to help them if anything happens. When oceans closed, our job is to prevent everybody from getting in that water and enjoying the day. So, those are tough, but last year, we were on 28. We've had years here in Imperial Beach where we're over 100 contaminated days in one year. So, that's down, way down. Preventative actions. This is where a lifeguard goes out, and somebody looks like they're gonna be in trouble, we'll go out and talk to them, we'll get them on a PA. Somebody tells us where's a safe place to swim, we'll tell them where to go. We had 15,540 of those last year. A record for us this year, we've never done in the past, is over 1,000 rescues in one year. That's what lifeguard agencies kind of grade themselves on, is how much, how many people are you actually rescuing, going out there and grabbing them and bringing them in, or they're having difficulty or maybe have not made it in at all. Last year was a record for us, 1,006 rescues. Hazardous debris removed. Lifeguards do a lot of other things than just rescues on the beach. We have lobster traps that people can get entrapped in. We have other debris that washes up on the beach that we have to remove. We've removed 717 of those. Medical aids. These go from some of the rescues we had where lifeguards were able to have, start CPR and save a patient last year, to where we're putting on a Band-Aid. We had 717 medical aids last year on the beachfront. Enforcement warnings. Who's down there? And the first people, you know, they have something going on, the first one they're gonna go do is a lifeguard in the tower, a lifeguard in the truck if they're having a problem. A lot of times, we like to see these enforcement contacts before they happen, and we're going out and making these contact and getting compliance before we have to call sheriff or somebody else to help out with the situation. We had 6,090 of those last year. This isn't the one, I'm not doing this, I'm the captain. I'm mainly in the lifeguard station most of the time. This is our lifeguards that are out there on the beach every day, our part-time lifeguards that come and work this tough job during the summer when they've got these huge clouds and crowds on the beach and a ton of responsibility. There's our full-time staff we have out there that are mentoring our younger lifeguards, bringing them up, taking the advanced training. Then, over the last year, we implemented our dive teams back and running at full strength due to our full-time staff. We also have implemented a river rescue team to augment the border patrol and San Diego city lifeguards that are in the River Valley. So, today was the day I wanted to share this with the mayor and council, let you know what we're doing at the beach, and really glad to be here and looking forward to the upcoming summer.
Great, thank you very much. Any questions? And we're gonna do a proclamation and recognition of National Beach Safety Week, but also just so the public knows, we had some of the biggest surf in the summer that I remember since the early 80s, I think. We had a lot of strong, very big hurricane swells. A lifeguard died in Newport Beach, probably some of the most dangerous conditions I've ever seen on our beach here. So, I want to acknowledge the fact that your lifeguards made rescues in serious surf, and I got hammered this last swell and reminded, just reminded myself how strong the waves get here and how much you can get injured just making a rescue or being out in the water in big surf like that. So, thank you very much for all the work that your lifeguards do. And now, we'll come up and give the proclamation. And just so it's clear, after that, then you will speak about and recognition of Benny Holt.
Oh, yeah.
And then, we'll be going up a proclamation. If anybody would like to speak about Benny at all, please fill out a blue card, and we've got, I've got all the cards from the folks here would like to also help out with the recognition. So, I'll come up to the front, and we'll do this, the proclamation.
So, proclamation, National Beach Safety Week. I want to again thank, I thank all the members of the lifeguard community, people I've known since I was a little kid, for being here. It's really important to acknowledge and respect our lifeguards and thank them every day for the great work they do. And so, National Beach Safety Week, June 7th to 14th, 2015, where as the beautiful coastal beaches of Imperial Beach represent a world-renowned recreational resource, and Imperial Beach residents and visitors alike are drawn to these beaches by the millions each year for water and beach activities, and the aquatic environment has dangers that can be effectively managed through public awareness and the vigilance of professional lifeguards. For reasons of public safety, an annual reminder of the joys and hazards associated with the aquatic environment are appropriate at the commencement of the busy summer beach season. And Imperial Beach residents and visitors alike must remember to never swim alone, always swim a lifeguard, near a lifeguard, never drink alcohol before swimming, respect the power of the surf, and learn to swim very, very well and teach your kids to swim really well.
well. So now therefore it be resolved that I, Serge DeDina, Mayor of the City of Imperial Beach, California, together with our entire city council, do hereby proclaim June 7th to June 14th, 2015 as National Beach Safety Week. So thank you very much.
Next up, yes, the proclamation we have for lifeguard, uh, Thomas, a lot of us like to call him Ben or Benny Holt. And, um, it's an honor and a pleasure, uh, to be able to sit here or stand up here and talk about a lifeguard. I've known since the first day I started lifeguarding, back in 1983, June. Benny was there to, to mentor me and bring me up to where I'm at now. A lot of you here. Benny, Benny and I, we were coworkers, but we're, we became really good friends too. Uh, we traveled Mexico to Baja together. We've been to mainland Mexico, down to, um, you know, Guatemala and all kinds of exciting places we've been to together. But lifeguard is what really brought us together, the love of the ocean, uh, the love of our community. Seeing Benny, um, coming to me in the last few years, everybody's like, Benny, when you gonna retire? When are you gonna retire, Ben? And, uh, he goes, oh, I wanna make it to, so I'm 70. And, uh, this is back when he was 50. I'm like, no way, he's not gonna do that, make it to 70, nobody makes it to 70. Um, that's what's astonishing is what Benny has done. Um, there, there, there can't be more than a handful of lifeguards throughout the nation that still lifeguarding when they're 70 years old. And Benny was able to accomplish that feat. There's one public safety director I, in the past, I always said, you know, you, you can, you can train a lifeguard, but you can never change their attitude. Benny has the best attitude. Everybody's here for Benny because of his attitude. He's a good person. Uh, he, he wants the best for his community, you know? So Benny, uh, I'm glad we, it took a while, but we're here and, uh, we get to honor you with a proclamation. And, uh, Mayor, DeDina?
We all, we all know who the unofficial mayor of Imperial Beach is, so, uh, first, um, I've known Benny since I was a, you actually tried to rescue me when I was 13 and it was a bunch of knucklehead friends, probably with Captain Stabinow. And you came down and then said, oh yeah, I know who you are, so you're fine. And then I actually ran for you and what people don't, none of you might know is that Benny's one of the finest cross-country coaches in the entire United States. And we have, and a generation of runners. We have Coach Guarino here from USD, one of our also finest collegiate coaches is here. Benny's trained and mentored a generation of runners and land lifeguards, but people also who have been trained to give back to our community and always do the best and, and think the best and be positive. You're a role model for me as mayor, because you're the mayor, you're the street mayor of IB and you always have something positive to say to everybody. And I can't tell you all the lifeguards I have talked to who was really upset, young lifeguards that no longer can work with you. So it's an honor to be here and like Robert, I've been with you in IB and in the middle of nowhere in Baja and you're always at your best. So anyway, honoring lifeguard Thomas Holt for 47 years of service with the city of Imperial Beach. Um, just, you know, Benny was hired by one of the most legendary lifeguards of all time, Alan Dempsey Holder, who was a legendary lifeguard in, in the history of California. So Benny's goes back to the pioneer lifeguards, uh, on a global level, so that's something to be really proud of. Thomas Benny Holt began to work for the city of Imperial Beach as an ocean lifeguard in 1967. And on March 1st to 2014, Thomas Holt officially retired at the age of 70, which is a remarkable achievement in the ocean lifeguarding field. And in his 47 years of service, Thomas Holt has made thousands of ocean rescues and provided medical aid to hundreds of beach visitors. And Thomas lived his dream of working on the beach and providing ocean rescue services to the community he loves and amongst his lifeguard colleagues, Benny was known as a veteran lifeguard who was very dedicated, reliable and trusting, always had a smile and something good to say. And whereas the city of Imperial Beach is committed to recognizing and honoring those individuals who are dedicated to the ideals of public service, and Thomas Holt is one such worthy individual.
Good evening again, Eddie Meyer with Congressman Juan Vargas. First of all, I want to just add that it is really a great honor and privilege to be here today. I am a Mar Vista High alum. Um, I come from a long line of Myers that were former students of yours. And, um, I can't think of, of, um, a bigger privilege that I could have to be here to recognize you on behalf of Congressman Vargas. Really quick, we put together, um, a congressional record for Benny. Today, at, in the, on the floor of the House of Representatives, we, uh, entered an extension of remarks, uh, whereas Benny would be forever memorialized in Congress into the congressional record. And I'm just gonna read really quick. And I'm just gonna read real quick the first sentence and then the, 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 the last paragraph. Mr., Mr. Vargas speaks. Uh, Mr. Speaker, I rise today to honor Thomas Holt for the outstanding commitment and dedication he has demonstrated to the city of Imperial Beach. Mr. Holt has devoted his life to preserving the lives of others. His outstanding achievements and his leadership and his commitment to the people of California's 51st District is an inspiration to us all. And the cool thing about this is you have an app, you can look it up on the computer anytime and you'll be able to find Benny's name memorialized in, uh, the US House of Representatives Congress.
All right, we have, now we have Greg Murphy from the Office of County Supervisor, Greg Cox. Thank you for coming.
Mr. Holt, uh, on behalf of Supervisor Greg Cox, this is actually not the first time that we're declaring a day on your behalf at the San Diego County Board of Supervisors. Uh, about this time last year, you were at the County Board of Supervisors and you had the day declared on your behalf, but for saving thousands of lives, it's worth a second day. So on behalf of Supervisor Cox and the entire Board of Supervisors, we do by, hereby declare May 20th, 2015 as Benny Holt Day.
And now we have, we have Ron Powell from the Port of San Diego, who was right here representing our Port Commissioner Dan Malcolm, who's away on business, but who wanted to make sure he, we understood that this is a priority for him and he has nothing but great respect for Mr. Holt.
Absolutely. Good evening, Mayor DeDina, city council members, uh, city staff. It's always good to be in beautiful and safe Imperial Beach. For the record, I'm Ron Powell from the Port of San Diego staff, and I'm here tonight because, uh, uh, Dan Malcolm couldn't be here, but he wanted to honor you, uh, and he wanted me to come down. He gave me specific notes to take that he wanted you to know, that he, that, you know, that he wanted you to hear. I'm not going to read all the proclamations, whereases, but I will read an excerpt from the email that Chairman Malcolm sent to me. He wrote, "A long time and much beloved lifeguard in Imperial Beach, Benny Holt is retiring. He has been a mentor to many lifeguards over the years and has served the city and the region with great distinction and dedication." So with those words from the Port of San Diego, I want to thank you, Thomas Benny Holt, for your decades, almost 50 years of outstanding service to the public. Thank you.
Okay, and now we have Jason Weiss from Speaker, Speaker Tony Atkins' office. Thank you so much for coming, Jason.
Hello, Mayor and Council. Jason Weiss with Assembly Speaker Tony Atkins' office. The speaker is in Sacramento today, so she could not join you herself, but it was very important to her that I attend and present to you, well, first, thank you for your many, many, many 47 years of service, Benny. And with me, I have brought in a, I have brought a certificate of recognition, which reads in part, "Presented to Thomas Benny Holt. Your exceptional devotion to the Imperial Beach community is honored and truly appreciated. Signed, Assembly Speaker Tony G. Atkins." Thank you.
And now we have Jason Weiss, I mean, I'm sorry, no, we had Jason, Dave Mitrovic from, uh, the Sweetwater Union School District of Mar Vista High School.
David Mitrovic, I'm the Assistant Principal at Mar Vista High School. I'm here representing Mar Vista High School and the Board of Trustees from the Sweetwater Union High School District. I have here Resolution Number 4368, a resolution honoring Benny Holt for his years of dedicated service to Mar Vista High School. Whereas Benny Holt graduated from Mar Vista High School in 1961 and was named Best All-Around Track Member his senior year. Benny has coached Mar Vista High School track and cross-country for over 33 years, spanning over five decades. He's admired and respected by faculty, administration, parents, and most of all, the students he coached and mentored. Therefore be it resolved that the Sweetwater Union High School District Board of Trustees, on behalf of his students, parents, faculty and staff, thanks and honors Benny Holt for his years of dedicated service to Mar Vista High School.
We also have, um, our, from the California State Senate as well. And it's a certificate of recognition from the state of California, uh, State Senate in recognition of 47 years of service as a lifeguard to Thomas Benny Holt from Senator Ben Wayso. So he couldn't be here, but he sent this as well, so thank you. Can we do a photo with Benny and all the lifeguards that are here? If anybody'd like to come up and take a photo, I'd love to have everybody up here, it's an historic moment. Love to have everybody here and all our, uh, Will, if you could come up here as well, I'd love to get a photo of everybody. We're thankful for our California State lifeguards that are here as well, as well, thank you guys. We got, we got lifeguards from all over and people have worked with Benny, thank you. Thank you very, very much for coming to honor one of our finest public servants. I promise you the rest of the evening won't be half as entertaining and rewarding. Before we, so we have the consent calendar 2.1 to 2.7. Before we entertain a motion to approve, we have Andrea Wagland here for item 2.1 to speak about 2.7. If we could get those doors closed, it'd be great as well.
Hi again, Andrea Wagland, this is my son Desmond, Route 24 Elquid. I'm just, um, here to support the recreational needs assessment. We are particularly interested in creating, um, a way to have a year-round option for swimming in Imperial Beach for IB residents. As you know, the, we are in very close proximity to the water and also the, there's intermittent water quality and there's a lot of days where the ocean is not available. The other problem is you can't learn to swim in the ocean, especially when you're Desmond's age. So we, it's really important that there's an affordable option for IB residents. The amount of money that Imperial Beach is losing to other cities, um, hopefully will be quantified in the needs assessment. And currently the options are going to the Coronado Pool, which no family membership option is provided for non-residents, or you can pay $120 a month for an individual, uh, for a month, or $10, uh, one day for, and $4 for a child. So that's, for, for a family of four, that's $30 for an hour swimming. It's really important that this assessment, um, be taken seriously. The, the, I'm in great support of opening up the Mar Vista High School pool, uh, year round. I just want to note that there is a highly impacted schedule and it is not a, it is not a fix. The pool starts at three feet, not a lot of people can bring their children in that are at a young age. And, um, and also, um, because of, uh, the, the way that, uh, it's set up, it's hard for, um, for people to, uh, you know, make it for the, the limited amount of time for rec swim from June 8th to July 17th for two hours in the middle of the afternoon. That doesn't really make it feasible for working parents to take their children swimming either in the earlier hours or later afternoon or on the weekend. That's what I wanted to mention and, um, please support the, the Andy, Andy Hall and his efforts to potentially have a partnership, um, with Coronado Pool for IB and also for the grant writing process to increase funds, uh, for Imperial Beach residents to have access to a swimming pool. Thank you.
Thank you very much, we appreciate those comments. With that, I would like to entertain a motion to approve consent calendar, item numbers 2.1 through 2.7. Please vote.
Motion carried unanimously by those present, council members Patton and Spriggs are absent.
Great, so we were gonna have, um, item number, it's a 5.1, right? 5.1, uh, right after this, so, uh, we'd like to have item 5.1, that's Report, County of San Diego Introduction of the Selected Design-Built Entity for the Proposed New Public Library at 810 Imperial Beach Boulevard. And Senior Planner Foltz will introduce the item. Oh, I'm sorry, Cincinnati manager Greg Wade will introduce the item.
Thank you. Tyler Foltz has been working quite closely with the county, as have other staff members, and I'm just going to introduce the County of San Diego. The, as you may know, they've been going through a design-build selection process for our county library across the street. And, uh, they're here to present the selected, uh, design-build entity. And I would introduce Mark Zabonic, who's, uh, we've been working very closely with over the last several years. Mark?
Good evening, Mayor, city council members. Um, I'm here tonight to, uh, let you guys know, we have finalized our design-build process and we've selected a winning best value team and I'm happy to present that that's going to be TB Pennick Contracting. It was, it's, it's been a pleasure working with IB. This is going to be the presentation that we're going to submit to you for the coastal development permit process. So this will be the first step in you guys getting a look at what we've, and the team has been able to come up with. I am going to introduce Jeff Katz, he's, uh, the architect of record. He's gonna kind of walk you through the design teams thinking of how they came up with the design and kind of let you guys get a first look.
Good evening, I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to present this exciting project to you this evening. Like to start off by acknowledging Owen Bingham with TB Penech and Sons, who is the builder on this project and Owen will be the Design Project Manager for Penech. I'm Jeff Katz, the Principal of Jeff Katz Architecture, will be serving as the Executive Architect on this project. I'd also like to introduce David Feifer with Doma Studio Architects, who is our Design Architect Partner on this project as well. A lot of people have been working on this project for, way before we got involved with it, from the county and from library staff. And we've been very excited to have the opportunity to work with all of them, to develop a concept and a proposal for this project. And I've had many years of experience doing design-build projects with Penech and we look forward to bringing this exciting project to the city of Imperial Beach. Tonight, I want to briefly present the design ideas, which we have worked with the county and library staff to develop. The architectural design of this library is driven by the concept of the library is a gathering space for the community. This informal, flexible, yet distinctive space encourages community pride and interaction. And we know how much a part of the community the Imperial Beach Library has been through the years and we expect the new library to be even more so. The library's proximity to the Women's Club and Veterans Park were great opportunities for us to create a real connection between all three of these elements. The building has been placed a little bit further away from the Women's Club and opened up from the existing design. We've incorporated additional parking and accessible parking along 8th Street. We also have created a boardwalk connection from 8th Street all the way through to the park to try and open up all of those elements. The landscaping around the building will be a combination of coastal native grasses and drought-tolerant planting and the existing trees in the park will remain and will be protected during construction. We treated the design of the building as though there's no backside to this building because in fact, there isn't. This project is seen from Imperial Beach Boulevard, it's seen from 8th Street, it's seen from the park. Understanding the significant visibility of the project from the street and the park was very important and creating a clear access to the library was also very important. We have the main entrance located, as you see in this slide, from 8th Street, adjacent to the boardwalk that goes through to the park. The building exterior is dominated by the central roof structure, which was designed to capture the feel of a breaking wave. The building is clad in a combination of stucco and durable eye-catching colored porcelain wood-like tile that is reminiscent of a series of beach cottages. The large metal library lettering signage is located on three sides of the building so that the building is clearly identifiable from all sides. The wave design of the roof allows us to incorporate high-clear story windows on the park side and a large expansive glass facing Imperial Beach Boulevard. We've incorporated photovoltaic panels on the roof. The building is designed to be a lead silver, excuse me, lead gold project and it will also be designed to meet net zero requirements as well. The floor plan of the library is designed around the wave structure. Just outside the main entrance is the Friends of the Library bookstore. From the interior, the central volume of the wave is the spatial connector to the various collections within the library. It serves as a common circulation, lighting, and wayfinding path to all areas of the library. Directly off the library is the community room, which will be available even during times the library is not open. Community room is divisible into two separate spaces and it also opens out onto the poet's patio space in the park beyond. The library itself transitions from the marketplace and the great room spaces to the adult collection and further to the south to the children's area. We've also included computer rooms with public access computers and a teen room with attached study rooms and homework rooms. The flooring material for the library entrance is a decorative concrete that has a sand look and it flows from the boardwalk through the lobby and towards the back of the library where it transitions to carpet tile that again is reminiscent of a sand transitioning to the water. The library interior is designed to be a comfortable beach cottage living room space, a learning environment, and a neighborhood gathering space. The theming elements, both interior and exterior, work to create this community feel. It's accomplished through bright colors, durable materials, and comfortable furnishing. At the entrance to the children's area, we've designed a customer service desk that is a replica of an old woody, complete with a surfboard desk and lacquered siding. The children's area will incorporate a variety of finishes and furnishings, including pebble-like beanbag chairs and other touch and feel elements throughout that children's area. The county library system is one of the best in the nation and we work closely with library personnel to make sure that we're addressing not only the best practices of the county's library system, but the specific needs of the Imperial Beach community. We believe the design of the Imperial Beach Library will be a great addition to the city and we look forward to seeing this project progress along with all of you.
Thank you very much. Do we have any questions or comments from our colleagues?
Thank you for this presentation. This is an awesome project. I think you have really captured, I mean initially, just looking at it now, you have really captured the essence of a small beach community and what we are. I do have a question that could be a policy question for us, could be a policy question for the county, but I'm wondering if the Friends of the Library bookstore could have a name on it from a past community member who has served this community, well, for many, many years and has passed on. So, I would just like to possibly bring that up to my colleagues and maybe our branch manager librarian could also bring that up. I'm not sure if it's at all possible, but at this stage of the game, I would certainly like to recommend the name of Frida Elliott Adams for the Friends of the Library bookstore. She was instrumental in forming the Friends of the Library. She was one of the founding members of our Women's Club, our unofficial official historian. So, she has served her community well and I couldn't think of a better spot or place in which to give her that recognition. Going back to the project itself, I know you're going, can you have a date for us of when you're gonna come back to us and so when our full council is here, Mr. Hall, do you have any idea when that will be? It will be after they go to the Design Review Board?
Are you gonna answer?
No.
I don't think any of us exactly know. We're trying to get to you June 17th, probably at the soonest. If not, then it would go into July, but that's when the permit would be back for you for review and between that time, go to the Design Review Board.
Okay, great, thank you.
Could you go back, I think there's a slide with the flag, the American flag and the California flag. Thank you. I just wanted, I really love this, the whole concept and I think it really fits, that's a real strong statement about California, our state, and as well as this whole design. And then I love the photos on the bottom, so you get the idea of where it came from. And I'm a big believer in the state of California, but also, and just the pride we take in our state and that look, I think it's really great. And then more importantly, really big fan of this library, I've been hanging out that library since 1971. I actually got lost in the stacks once, my mom couldn't find me. When I was at UCSDA, I used to study that library about eight hours a day when I wasn't going to school. So, it means a lot to me. I still have an IB library card, I've had it since 1971. So, really want to thank you guys for putting a lot of thought and effort into this. We're big fans of the library, I'm a member for life of the Friends of the Library. So, want to thank you for really spending a lot of time thinking about this and more importantly, making it a real welcoming space for kids and families. I know that's, it's a huge resource for our community. So, want to thank your whole team and then of course, Librarian Engel for all the great work she does in making it such an inviting and critical space for, and welcoming space for our community. So, thank you very much. I think we're done here, so thank you gentlemen for coming and we appreciate you taking the time. And now we go on to the public hearings portion of the evening. We have item 4.2. And that's consider approval of Resolution Number 20157579 to confirm the Integrated Solid Waste Management Services maximum fee increase requested by Edgo Disposal Corporation effective July 1, 2015 and authorizing future inflationary adjustments through July 1, 2020. And the public hearing is now open. We'll receive report from Environmental Program Manager Chris Helmer. Thank you.
City Council Mayor, we're here to, for you to confirm Echo's proposed rate increase for our solid waste service in the city. The city has an agreement with Echo that was approved by City Council in 1999 that lays out the terms and conditions for which we're allowed to increase or for their, they're allowed to propose increases in their solid waste collection fee. And it's based on inflationary changes and based on changes based on charges for tipping fees that are charged at the landfills. As you can see in your staff report, the proposed rate increases are 2.91% for residential customers and 3.17% for commercial customers. We have John Snyder here from Edco that's able to entertain any questions or concerns and I'm here to respond to any questions or comments from the City Council.
Is there any public comment? Anybody like to make a comment, fill out a blue card? Okay, any comments or concern, issues, questions from my colleagues? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do, perhaps Mr. Snyder, you could join us at the podium. Thank you for being here. I see also Steve South in the audience, thank you. I remember the night we, I think initially approved this and one of your children was born that same night. You raced from here to go be with your wife for the birth of your child. It's good to have you back in our audience again, you've been our provider for 15 years. I do have a couple of questions, maybe a couple of comments, a couple of things that maybe you could explain for us. First of all, Mr. Snyder, talk to us about the home front cleanup, if you would.
The home front cleanup? Well, the first Saturday in May, every year, we do the home front cleanup. For years, it was at Mar Vista High School. We moved it just down the road this year to Southway Union High School District on their property. And we had overwhelming participation, 874 vehicles came this year. Last couple of years has been the 5, 600s, but I guess IB residents wanted to clean up a little bit better this year. And had about 134 tons of trash and about 75 tons of recoverables. So, that's, the recoverables, when I say that's recyclable, so anything from concrete, construction debris, wood, e-waste, metal, is all recovered. In addition to the home front cleanup, we actually combined it with the annual summer shredding event, which is document destruction. We had about 80 Imperial Beach residents come and shred their documents for free. And it's, that's a growing event, people just love that because it's an outlet where you can get all that stuff that your home shredder won't handle. It's years and years of stuff that's piled up and bring it down and shred it up for free. But we shredded about 2.5 tons of paper that day. So, it was a very successful event.
Okay, thank you for that. That is one of our nearest and dearest events. We love our home front cleanup, so thank you for that. I did want you to explain, Mr. Helmer's brought it up first, explain the tipping fees, if you would.
Yeah, a tipping fee is, in a sense, tipping a truck at a landfill and dumping material out. That's where the term comes from, comes from, it's kind of a nickname term. But when we haul trash to a landfill, the local landfills, most of it will go through our transfer station in Barrio Logan and then end up at O-Tai. We get charged a fee per ton. A typical truck that you see collecting on the streets carries around 10 to 11 tons. So, it's driven to the transfer station and then transferred out to the landfill. Something I made note, something we like to remind folks is we don't own the landfill. We don't own any landfills. We don't want to own any landfills. We're a recycling company first and we're more interested in recycling than landfilling. So, anything you see us doing to increase recycling, to help Imperial Beach meet its recycling requirements for the state, that's what we're about.
Okay, thank you. And that was another thing that I wanted you to talk about if you could, it's in our staff report, but you state that you help us to remain in compliance with state regulations. What does that mean?
Well, in 1989, the state passed pretty landmark legislation in the state of California, Assembly Bill 939. It required cities and counties to divert 25% of their waste stream by 1995 and 50% of their waste stream by the year 2000. I'm pleased to say Imperial Beach has been in compliance with that since that time, but there's been changes. A few years ago, I want to say four years ago, the state passed another law for recycling that actually set a goal of 75%, but actually mandated mandatory commercial recycling and multifamily recycling for units over five units and businesses over a threshold of trash generation. And I can tell you that Imperial Beach is among one of the highest in compliance in the state with an over 90% participation rate in commercial and multifamily recycling. It's astounding, the job that IB has done. And that's not us necessarily, it's the staff and us working together.
Thank you for that. Colleagues, I had spoken with Mr. Snyder before this meeting and those numbers were astounding and we can thank our staff for that and Hank Levine, but also our residents for understanding how important these issues are and what a great job our residents are doing and how important it is that we stay in compliance because the fines are pretty hefty.
Yes, they are, yeah, correct.
Did you want to talk about the fines?
Well, the fine on the first goal was $10,000 a day from the state, so that made it happen. That made companies like us that were traditionally trash haulers back in the 70s and 80s become recyclers, so.
Okay. I did, I'm sure my colleagues did too, we looked over the tables. Did you want to talk about any of those tables? I had questions just for the audience and Mr. Snyder, if you would.
Yeah.
Explain which cart most of the residents have. The increase, I think we, you and I talked about, was an 81% increase. We also looked at commercially for our businesses, what those increases were I had and you and I talked about it. It was based on how many times a business has a pickup. And there's, I don't know, is the audience looking at the slide or not? But a three-yard bin six times a week is $787. And Mr. Snyder said, "We really don't have any business in town that pick is that, is large enough to have that much pickup, it's really more like a hospital." So.
Correct, yeah, I did find one.
Okay.
The hotel.
The hotel, okay.
Yeah, that's our six-day-a-week customer and the lion's share of customers in Imperial Beach are the three-yard bin once a week, which is the 14887 going to 15359, which is a 3.17 increase, so.
Okay, that was the multifamily residential.
Most, yeah, most businesses and multifamily are on that service level.
Okay.
It's very common.
Okay. Thank you for all those answers, thank you.
Any other comments? First, thank you for being here and then, no one, I don't think anybody in office wants to be in a position of increasing rates for consumers. Just, I looked at this and this seems to be, this increase seems to be less than the historical average, except for 2002, which was good to see. And for a 35-gallon cart, I think that's for my dad who's here, that'll be about 81 cents a week. I mean, 81 cents a month would be the increase.
The 81 cents is on the highest user, the 90-gallon.
Okay.
For your dad, it would be 76 cents a month.
Oh, I'm sorry.
For the 35.
I was looking at 76, so dad, that's.
Or Mr. Dina.
So, and my dad actually got recycling over the year award or month award, so he's doing his job. But we'll help you collect cans, dad, to make sure you can pay that.
Actually, I have my file from back in the day when I was here a couple of months ago, I pulled that out by accident, I was like, is it Mr. Dina getting the recycler award?
So, anyway, I did have the opportunity to visit the site and your site and was impressed with, first of all, the global nature of the company. And it was during, I think, the shipping strike?
The Longshoreman Strike, West Coast.
Longshoreman Strike and to see all the product that you guys had backed up, waiting to be shipped overseas, so. And really, that really fascinated me to see that, you know, when you put that stuff in your recycling bin, you're connected to buyers and recyclers all over the world and using that end product. So, that was really impressive. And then to see the multi-generational workforce that you've had, the folks that are, you know, three generations of a family that are working there. So, it was absolutely fascinating and I hadn't realized how committed you were to recycling. So, it's been really good to see that and also see the good job that you're doing, really making us make sure we reach those commitments. So, I think IB's number one in everything tonight, so we're continuing that.
That's right.
Anyway, I don't have any more questions or comments.
Mayor, the only other thing I wanted to note for the record is that the city only received one protest letter for the proposed rate increase, so.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Motion carried unanimously by those present, Patton and Spriggs are absent.
Thank you. Now we move on to item 4.1. Keagle applicant, consideration of regular coastal permit, conditional use permit, CUP 1424, design review in case, site plan review, intended map, and catacholol exemption pursuant to CEQA guidelines 15332 for the demolition of one existing residential unit and construction of a new mixed-use development with three residential condominium units above commercial units at 951 Seacoast Drive, MF 1149. And I declare the public hearing open. And we receive a report from Senior Planner Foltz.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council. The staff is recommending that the council adopt resolution 2015-7577, which would approve the demolition of one existing unit and construction of a new mixed-use development with three residential condominium units above approximately 2,100 square feet of commercial space at 951 Seacoast Drive. The rationale would be that the city should benefit, or the project would benefit the city by providing residential units to assist in housing demand. It would also provide visitors serving ground floor commercial space and also have an economic benefit for the neighborhood. In addition, the design review board reviewed the project twice and recommended approval of the project with a vote of three to zero. The project's located in the CMU2 Seacoast Commercial Zone, which is Seacoast and Mixed Use Zone, and which is located at Elder Avenue and Seacoast Drive. And this is the project as it sits today, just east of Pier Plaza, south of Argus Village. And this is the project site. Property to the north, Argus Village. Properties to the south. Properties to the east. And Pier South to the west, or not Pier South, Pier Plaza's the west. Pier South is over there somewhere, though. This is the site plan for the project. I'll have another picture that zooms in a little bit. But what they're proposing is commercial square footage on the bottom floor. There's 2,118 square feet of commercial space. It could be divvied into two separate spaces if necessary, or it could just be one. And there'd be three residential units above the first floor. The commercial units would be accessed from Seacoast Drive for pedestrian access. There'd be five parking spaces off the alley for residential, and then there'd be one commercial parking space. Now typically, in the commercial zone, you'd likely, you would need two parking spaces for 2,000 square feet of commercial space. However, if the project is divvied into two separate spaces, if one of the units is less than 1,000 square feet, it's subject to a parking waiver, which would only require one parking space. If there's one tenant that takes over both spaces, though, then you'd need those two spaces. However, the code would allow, if approved through a conditional use permit, to have a waiver of the parking if there's parking lots within 1,000 feet. And there are parking lots at Elko Avenue and then also the Lindley Parking Lot, which could be sufficient for that parking if approved through the CUP. And there'd also remain, you'd also still have that ADA parking stall off of Elder Avenue right here. So it's proposed that these five spaces would be for the residential parking. It's kind of hard to see here. I'll go to the next slide. There's bike parking here. It would likely be moved to another location, maybe over here, a more appropriate location that could be seen clearly through the construction drawings if it were approved. But there would be bicycle parking. It's one of the requirements for the project. If we do allow for a reduction in parking, they have to provide transportation demand management strategy, parking implementation, which more or less is they're going to provide bicycle parking. There's bus pickup nearby. One of the conditions of approval is that the commercial tenants would have to encourage the use of alternate transportation methods, bicycle, bus stops, et cetera. If needed, we could add a condition saying that they would provide bus passes or something along those lines if necessary. The access for the residences would also be from Seacoast Drive or the parking spaces, and they would access through the back through either an elevator or stairwell. And this is the second floor plan. Two of the units would be accessed from the second floor. This is the stairway that's leading up for one of the units and stairway that would also, or elevator that would lead to a second unit. This round element is, one of the key points of the project is called Lighthouse Point. It's a rounded element that is trying to mimic, at least in some respects, a lighthouse element, and that's why it's rounded in design, going right to the setback. And this is the third floor plan, which is, the third unit would access from the third floor plan. And then the, this other unit would be accessible from the second floor plan, but then you'd go up to the third floor as well. So there's three units in total. And each of the units would have a roof deck, or at least that's what's proposed, which would also have landscaped areas that would have to be maintained by each separate property owner. One thing to note is, on the roof, because the portion of that lighthouse element is going right to the property line, there is a portion of the roof overhang that's proposing to extend into the public right-of-way about one to two feet. And that's being proposed by the applicant in some respects because the city's requiring that they dedicate a portion of their property. Here at the corner, on the bottom floor, there's a pedestrian ramp that goes over their property line. We'd require that to be dedicated to the city. In addition, because there's a, there would be an ADA accessible pathway for this driveway, which would also, portions of that would have to be dedicated to the city. So that's why that's being proposed. Each unit would have various decks and setbacks and stepbacks for the project. And this element on the roof is to house mechanical equipment, and we'll get into that in a second. The building itself is at 35 feet, and that's the top of the roof deck area. And that's where the mouse is shown right here. Typically, the limit is 30 feet, but you could request a 35-foot height limit if you provide two incentives. The two incentives that are being proposed by the applicant is that each of the units would be three-bedroom. You have to have 25% to be able to get that incentive. They're proposing 100%. Each unit would be three bedrooms. And then they're also proposing to have more than 75% of the ground floor as an active commercial use. The entire ground floor would be for active commercial use. With regards to the limit, even though this is the 35-foot height limit for the usable building structure, our code says you can go above the limit with certain things. And those certain things would be equipment shelters, which is this element that's being proposed. It would house the equipment for the building. Stairwell enclosures, which is here, the highlighted area that I'm highlighting. Elevator enclosures, which is right here. And then also parapet walls, which would be required because there's a roof deck, you need to have guardrails, parapet walls. So those are being proposed to go above the height limit. The project's also requesting a 13 and 1/2-foot floor-to-ceiling dimension. The code requires a 15-foot floor-to-ceiling dimension for the commercial space. However, in order to get at least nine feet of floor-to-ceiling dimensions for the residential spaces, they're requesting a foot and a half deviation. The code allows for a 10% adjustment, which is what's being proposed. It's similar to what was being proposed for the Elm Avenue, Seacoast and Elm Project. They were running into the same situation where they needed a little bit of room to be able to make it work for both the commercial and the residential, and the applicant's proposing that as well. These are just another picture of the west and east elevations. And these are elevations on the north and the south, the north area off the alley, and then the south portion off of Elder. And this is a rendering for the project site, which just shows the different elements that are being proposed. This color right here, somewhat difficult to see, but it's copper. And there'd be a black wood element. This would be a lighter gray stucco. These would be all glass for the retail component. It would be set back a little bit so that there could be some patio space. The landscaping that's being shown in the right-of-way is just conceptual in nature. They'd be required to implement whatever is required by the city council when they review the Seacoast aesthetic plan, which is going to come before the council in the future. This applicant will be required to implement whatever those decisions are. And this is another rendering from a different view. One thing I forgot to mention is, not shown on this rendering, is a rock base. It was shown on the black and white elevations, but it's also going to be, would be provided on the, will be provided on the rendering in the future date. But it's to tie together the rock element that's being proposed for the partitions. It would also be proposed at the bottom of the wall here. And this is just a rendering of the back portion. This is where it would access for the ADA parking stall. And a view from the alley. And this is a rendering of what it would look like at night. I mistakenly did not put it in your application, the agenda packet, so I'm showing it here. But it would light up, so that's the rationale for the Lighthouse Point. It would act as a play on words. Mimics a lighthouse in some respects. It's also a house that lights up. So it's, that's the, some of the rationale behind it, which the architect or owner can get into in further detail. And this is another conceptual rendering at night. The city council has options, of course. In addition to receiving the report and adopting staff's recommendation, the council can either approve the project with modifications requested by the council, disapprove the project, and deny the requested permits by making findings, or continue the public hearing to a specific meeting in the future to allow staff to provide additional information when a decision can be rendered. That concludes staff's report.
Great. Thank you very much. Do we have any public comments? Yeah, so we have, do you want to hear the, or the applicant speak? Right, okay.
I do believe we did receive communication from a community member that spoke in support of the project. Is that correct, Mr. Hall?
Yeah, that was attachment number six. There was a member of the public who spoke in favor of the project. It was, yes.
If you could please sit down and, yeah, maybe he's here.
Thank you for having me here. All the audience, thank you for coming. I'm the owner of the.
If you could say your name and address for the record.
My name is Richard Kegel. I live at 951 Seacoast Drive in the older building that's there. I had the privilege of being able to purchase this. I purchased that because we wanted to live there, not knowing that we could put a couple more units. I've been a builder for 25, 30 years in Chicago, and so I have good experience, especially in design, and also working with art, art design and some good engineering group that we came up with this proposed project. I feel proud of the project. I don't know how you guys feel. I hope you like it. I think it's an iconic location. And that location deserves, that's all the wonderful things we heard about IB. I think it's a plus for IB to have a nice-looking project like that. And a lot of travelers and people are going to see it, and I think it's something that pleases the eye. Also, we use materials that, by the way, the name, I thought it works with the right being by the beach. That's why I kind of tried to do the round portion, so it kind of gives it that feeling of being by the beach. And spent a lot of hours and making a lot of changes because I wanted to be pleasing to everybody living there and to you people. So if there's any questions, as far as the, we used certain metals because living next to the beach, there's a lot of corrosion. So we proposed to give you option of two. Real copper, now they make copper with stainless back, which is very, very expensive. Or we can use regular steel, which have to be galvanized up to 2,500 degrees in special ovens. That protects it from, for the rust, but then you got to powder coat it to the color that you want. I brought a bunch of samples, but if you would like to look at them, I'm more than happy to show them to you. And I try to comply with everything that the planning department, the city desired. I would love to be able to build this project. It's taken a lot of time, and I'm not doing this to be a rich guy over here because it costs a lot of money to build this unit. And I plan on living there for a long, long time. It's a beautiful place. And as we heard tonight, it's a very safe place, and I give all the counsel, and everybody has a part in this, that IB is a beautiful place to live. It's very clean, feels safe, and I'm happy to be here.
Thank you. Thank you. Are there any, any questions from my colleagues? No, have you?
Thank you. Oh, okay.
We have comments. We have more comments, so sir, if you could sit down and then we can come back and, if we can ask you, we can ask you questions.
I guess there's quite a few people here, about 10 of them that like the project.
Well, Mr. Hill, did you want to speak?
Sure.
Okay.
Hi, my name is Joshua Hill. I live at 1301 Loudon Lane. I guess, and again, forgive my ignorance, this is the first city council I've been to, but I just had a question about the building itself. So I don't, should I direct that to you or to?
Depends on what the question would be.
Okay. I guess in terms of the mixed-use first level, who would be deciding what goes there? Would that be?
The zoning that's in place would limit what can go there. So in the CMU2 zone, it describes what type of uses would be allowed, such as retail uses, office uses, et cetera. So really, the market at that point would drive what use would go in there, maybe a restaurant, maybe a small retail shop.
Would that be decided by the council or by the owner?
Property owner.
Property owner, okay, cool. And then, I guess, my next question would be, in terms of the photovoltaic cells not being used on the roof and just having the landscaping that's supposed to be maintained by the owners of each unit, I was just curious to see, is there, I remember reading that there's an HOA. Is that going to be part of including that as well? Or like, in the upkeep of that landscape on the top roof? Or is that just, if they don't upkeep it, then it's, you know, whatever?
Yeah, you want me to respond?
I don't know. Am I allowed to?
Yeah, typically, the HOA documents, CCNRs, et cetera, would have a requirement for maintaining landscaping. The city would also have that same requirement to maintain landscaping. So if it was discovered that it wasn't maintained, it's a requirement for the project. Follow up with, you know, violation notices, things along those lines, if ever necessary. But typically, these things are maintained.
Okay, awesome, cool. No further questions.
Thank you, Mr. Hill. Thank you for coming to your first council meeting. You're more than welcome to come back anytime. And now we have Soraya, if you want to speak.
Hello. I'm Soraya Bizet from Spirit Realty, and I'm also a resident here. And for, for the, I'm going to be also a real estate agent that's going to be assisting with the leasing and, and sales of the property. I live here and work here, so it's to my benefit to also bring something beautiful to town for the obvious reasons, jobs and beautifying right by our pier, which is really important, that it kind of keeps the, you know, the beach look and instead of a big blocky just building, now we have something that actually brings some kind of beauty to the city. But the most important thing, I think, about this building is, if you see, if you walk by that corner, it's like the most trafficked corner, traveled corner, to get to the pier, to go to the, to the thing they have on Friday with the, I'm sorry. Yeah, so, sorry, I'm a little nervous. But this is going to, and people get kind of stuck with their strollers and they're trying to get across. It's going to give more open space for people to be able to kind of, just kind of relax and be able to travel through that corner. It's a very, it's, you know, they try to kind of sit on the steps when they go there, you know, the parking is kind of, it's awkward. People don't know really what to do, and there is a crosswalk there. But I think because of the building and that commercial space, it's going to give people a feeling of like home. Hey, I can sit here, I can go to the shop, you know, I don't have to rush and be pushed to go across. So I think that that's the best benefit, I think. It's gonna feel, make people comfortable here, you know, at the beach, the view of the pier, and of course, it's a beautiful building. So, hey, thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, I don't have any other public comment. Um, Councilmember Bragg?
Thank you. Just making a couple of notes here with me. To the developer and the owner. There you are. I didn't see you. I have my glasses on. I have to tell you that I saw this rendering weeks ago. And, um, staff was really surprised at my reaction 'cause it was laying on a table and I walked in and, and they were thinking, oh, she's not gonna like this at all. And I said, and I'm gonna say it again, I love this project.
Thank you so much.
It is incredible.
That's architect designer myself, uh, who's here. You can stand up, take a bow for that. And, uh, we appreciate that. We worked a lot of nights. Trust me, we made so many changes. We wanted something very special because that location is gonna be here much longer than I am, not gonna be around. And I think adds a lot to the ci- to the city. It's a focal point right there. So thank you for the compliment. I appreciate that.
Well, you're welcome. And, and in your comments, you said, and you were correct in stating it, this is an iconic building. It's in an iconic location. And we have very few opportunities in this bill, almost built out community. So we really have to turn an eagle eye to everything that comes before us. So having said that, let me dig in. Um, and I, I did, uh, read through the notes of the design review board, and they had some suggestions as well, which I thought were very appropriate, and maybe, you know, you and I could speak about these. And also, I wanted to thank our speakers who brought up some really interesting points. The one gentleman, thank you for coming to your first council meeting, you're always welcome, um, was the solar issue of solar. Might be something we can look at later. And then for staff, at the, and I'm gonna call it the end of the building, the most southern portion of the building, and something we may have to look at is a crosswalk. Um, there is going to be a lot of traffic, and I know it's gonna kinda break things up. There's not one there right now. There, I think the nearest crosswalk is that to Market to Market. And I don't know if we wanna, you know, burden Seacoast Drive with a lot of crosswalks, but that might be something we do need to look at. So anyways, going back to, to the project, um, I love the stacked stone, the culture stone. I love that feature of it. And I think the design review, review board had, and maybe this rendering doesn't show it, but also including that, I'm gonna pull this out for you. Including that here in this, in this portion.
Correct, that whole bottom would be stone to match the rest.
Yes. And then, um, in meeting with staff, uh, you know, I was delighted to hear that this portion of it is Brazilian wood.
Brazilian wood, so it doesn't rot and would, would hold salt and things like that. And I have samples here, but if you'd like to see them.
Yeah, if you wanna get those out.
I, I made sure that-
You have samples? I'd love to see them.
Yeah, we'd love to see them.
Yeah.
But I'm wondering, why are we painting that wonderful Brazilian wood black and not leaving it in a natural state?
If I may answer that, it comes like in the reddish wood, but I have a plain sample of that. It complements the copper, makes the building stand out. Otherwise, the copper and the light wood just blends together and it doesn't make a statement.
Okay, so you're, you were intentionally going for a contrast? Okay, here we go. Boy, somebody help that girl.
This is a sample of the real copper and that will become, you know, it will darken. And so it becomes, uh, and then I have a sample of the powder coated one. Which will never darken and will never, uh, bring up. This one.
Okay, what is this?
That would be the powder coated steel, which would be anodized first in a very high heat oven. I'm kinda familiar with that stuff because I used to do that type of work. So I think that would stand longer. If you do the regular copper, it's much expensive and the patina sometimes darkens so bad that it, it almost looks, loses the effect of copper. Uh, also the stone, this is the Brazilian wood. Also stained white for the back part, which we propose. Talking to the mic, okay. I had, uh, an option. This is one type of stone. This is another, another type of stone. And, uh, I have the original, what we propose here. Excuse me. This is the one that's on the picture. It's kinda heavy, so I wanna, but it's ordinary because everybody's using this type of stone. So I thought that along with the gray and the shiny speckles in it would really be better. So I, you have an option, whatever you would like me to do, I, I'm more than happy to do it. Shiny.
A workout? We're not doing a, an evening council rock lifting workout.
This is the charcoal, dark charcoal stain.
If, if I could, if I can make a note, the design review board recommended approval of this stone, if, if that matters.
Yeah.
The one in my left hand. Because it sparkles a little bit and they felt it would be, be nice in the sun.
Then I also offer this option, which is the lighter, and the staff picked out the darker. They liked the darker, and this is the lighter version. Right. And these are some of the stock of samples that I had done, so.
We appreciate you showing all these materials.
Thank you for having all of those samples. It really does, you know, having them in front of us really does put it together. Um, if you could, um, and I do like the copper. I love it.
Thank you. Did you like the regular copper or you like this, the powder coated?
I liked the regular. I really did.
They liked the shiny one because it's gonna really make a statement. The patina darkens, it's gonna look closer to the wood once it gets a couple of years old, so.
And you know, it's, it's a matter of, I think, preference. I, I just like it. I, I really enjoy that. Having said that, I really love this project. I do have-
Thank you so much.
I really, I have some other, and I'm not an architect, so just bear with me. But in, in discussion, we were thinking that it, it almost looks as if this bottom portion was built. And then we thought, well gee, maybe we need wanna make it taller so that, or bigger, larger, whatever. So then the second two stories were added on, and it almost seems to, to float. It almost seems to be an afterthought and not connected to the bottom floor. We were wondering if possibly these, um, pillars could be brought down into to make it look all-
It could, it could. And I had the stone before, but the review board didn't want it there. So I'm having different opinions here. And there, it's not such a big space, so the glass would allow you to see in. And we want to have like little cafe tables in front so people could see inside and outside.
Okay. That, that would just be, um, again, one of maybe desires of our council. Um, and I, and I, I'm just going to possibly suggest to my colleagues that maybe we do want to continue this so that, you know, we do have two other members of the council, who unfortunately couldn't be here tonight. But I know that they're probably thinking, gosh, I'd love to have input on that too.
Right.
If, if it wouldn't be too much of an imposition for you. That would be, that would be wonderful. And I, I do, I mean, I love this project. But we had another project in front of us that had a, when was it, a lifeguard tower portion of it. And we had to tell people, that's a lifeguard tower. And they said, oh, I get it. So looking at this, if I have to tell, you know, if that was, if the name wasn't there and I had to tell somebody, well, it's a lighthouse, then maybe we haven't really hit the nail on the head yet. And this portion up here, um, if there was any way to make that really pronounced architecturally, that we were supposed to be mimicking a lighthouse, and quite honestly, we don't have a lighthouse in Imperial Beach. So this is a little bit of a stretch for us, so I'm not really married to that name so much. But I get what, you know-
Pier point, uh, we could name it.
You know what? I, that, I suggested that. Great minds think alike.
We really, yeah, there you go.
Um, and just for me personally, the, uh, they, um, I don't know what they are.
I took them off, you know. I took them off and I showed them. It just took something away. I can take it off. It's not an issue, but it's part of the support. And if you ever have high winds or something like that, it does help to keep it together, but.
Could that support again be more-
Make it flat against the roof?
Well, just be more indicative of an actual lighthouse. You know, when we look at lighthouses, there's some very iconic features to them so that even if it was pier point and not lighthouse point anymore, the average person would say, that's a lighthouse. I get it. Which is kind of what I'm going, the, what I'm going for. That's pretty much all I have for you architecturally. I did have some questions for staff perhaps that could, and thank you so much. This is, I, like I said, I really love this project.
My architect's here, if you have any questions for him.
Okay, uh, don't go anywhere. We may. As far as the landscaping, um, I just wanna make sure that it is drought tolerant. And I understand that this, um, landscaping in front is called horsetail. Mr. Wade informed me that that is horsetail. It's very unusual. Uh, I'm just kinda, I wonder a little bit about maintenance of it. I, um, I think it looks like, I'm gonna be really honest, I think it looks like a bed of nails. So I'm not really feeling the love on this one. Maybe something a little bit more, I don't know, just a little bit different. And just to answer, one gentleman did speak about the tenants. Do we have any idea of the tenants at all at this point? Um, I'm sure, of course, that is up to you and what our code will allow. And I really do love the idea of outdoor dining and that you have moved the building back to make the sidewalk appear to, and it actually is a little bit larger. That is absolutely wonderful because as you heard from one of our speakers, that's, that sidewalk is traveled, uh, extremely well throughout, all year long, actually. We didn't even talk yet about job creation, so if at some point maybe you wanted to talk about that. Talked about the crosswalk, uh, Mr. Folds, I know maybe in the future, but I think that that could be a consideration. Did wanna ask about the ADA, the placement of the ADA parking stall is on Elder Avenue. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And so we're removing one parking space in front of a residential home or?
On the street?
Yes, on the street. And it, it, do we know?
Let's see if I can show you an aerial, her picture so you get, get a better idea. I'll get there.
Okay. While you're looking, I did wanna comment to the developer and the architect too. As we heard from the county about the library, you know, there's really no front or back to that building. And in essence, this is the same situation. You know, you're viewing it from, well, not so much the alley side, but really three sides. And I think you have paid particular attention to that aspect of the project, and I really appreciate that.
The, the space that would be removed would be in front of their project site, so it's an existing space that's available to the public right now.
Okay, thank you. This is, um, a very unusual lot size. And the, you know, it's, it's a very long skinny narrow lot. Um, I knew the woman who owned that property for many years and have been in that house many, many times. Um, the view is incredible. So welcome to the neighborhood. You have, you do have a wonderful view. But again, uh, we have such few opportunities for these projects, especially on Seacoast Drive. And, you know, in light of now another hotel coming on and then another project just to, um, the north of you. So, um, you know, we were really gonna delve into this extremely well. Um, that kinda wraps up my comments at the time. Thank you.
Any other comments? Um, I, I'd love, Mr., is it Penfick? Jose, if you could, uh, maybe come up and I'd love to ask you, just ask a few questions. First, I wanna thank, uh, the, Mr. Kegel, am I, Kegel? Thank you so much for your, your vision and your belief in Imperial Beach. I know I talked to you before this project was, uh, way bef- and I think in the fall, so thank you very much. I appreciate that. Your, your passion for this project, and, uh, I'm really excited about it. And I, I just wanted to, um, just ask, uh, if you could go to the, the picture of the lights? Cause I didn't, I'm sure you had that for this before, uh, with the light. So before that, I didn't really understand the lighthouse concept, so I'm really glad we, we have that. But I was just wondering, you know, when we had, we just had the, um, City Mark project and we had the Sudbury project. Those are the two big projects we have. And in the library, they, I, it was really definitely tied to sort of iconic sort of IB or California. So I, I got in the library, they had the photos on the bottom, and it really tried to tie into more of a California concept. So with this, because of sort of lack of the lighthouse, I always wanted to make, get some idea from you, sort of what was, what, how does this fit into Imperial Beach and sort of, sort of a Southern California context? It seems a little bit different, and that's not bad. I just wanted to make sure I understood that.
Uh, good evening to everybody. My name is Jose Perez, and I'm an architect of this project. And basically, um, it is a little different, and basically, that's the idea. The idea is that, uh, every city is constantly changing for the better. Uh, and certainly in Pearl Beach, you can see it five, ten years ago. It's not what it is right now. Uh, in, in Seacoast Drive is, it's actually trying to invite construction, something like this. Um, the, when you have designs like this that fifty percent don't like it, or if the other fifty percent likes it, it's good because that's what makes it iconic. Cause if you make flat boxes or if you do something that is not, even with the library, what stands out to me is the, the way of, uh, an element that they have. Other than that, it, it will take just a difference from something standard to something different. So in this case, other than having, trying to, uh, help the, the commercial, the business, uh, improving the sidewalk, uh, making it five feet wider, um, having the view in, in that, specifically in that area. For me, it's totally something open with a lot of glass and something that basically it's, it's, uh, for me and for, for Rich, where we're trying to, uh, design it. What we have right now, which is a single family residence, and it's a standard residence from fifties, sixties, and that, that, that's what doesn't match right now. That's, it, it has to go away on that particular street for me. Well, that's what I think. So when you put this, other than the Lighthouse Point, um, um, name and also that tower, that's in debate regarding the, if, uh, if we, we, in other words, I mean, Rich, I'm trying to talk a lot of things at the same time. Uh, basically, the light tower, at first, this building was square. All, all the three levels were just, uh, just basically about finished. And we saw it, it was just a typical downtown, uh, building, and we don't want it that. And then we're front of the plaza, so we wanted to do something different. That's why when Richard came out with the idea of the tower, I said, okay. At first, I didn't like it, um, and I started growing up, trying to design it and make it look nice with the materials. And at the end of the day, we, we think that that's the best part, and also facing the north, basically. That when, once you stand on the plaza, you will see that element. And compared to that, to the one that's on the side or to a single family residence, right now is, is, it's a building that you, you can just pass by and not even look at it. And you can, you can ask, did you see this house? And no. In this case, some, somebody, they, they kinda start saying, oh, by the last house, Lighthouse Point building. Uh, and that's gonna happen for sure. So that's why we thought, also because we're in a pier and we're in a beach, I think all those elements came together. Um, and also trying to make it more modern and also the materials and the type that we're using to, to try to get outside of what usually the tan, uh, it's been used. And, and it looks super nice, and, and you can see all the houses in Eastlake and all houses in Rolling Hills. They're, uh, million dollar homes, but it's just tan, it's typical stone and, 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 uh, the typ- stone and, 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 uh, the typical roof tile. In this case, you have copper, you have movement, you have balconies, you have, uh, uh, a, a lighthouse, uh, element. And plus we're also trying to make everything, uh, more, uh, high-end material. So once you provide that, uh, I think there's, there's, in my opinion, and there's the better way to provide that to the public. So that's going to be a focus point for the city. And if we start doing something similar or, 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 or typical basically, then it's, it's not gonna, what I, what I'm trying to say is when somebody says that they don't, they don't like something, I like it because that means that they cannot talk about it and they're not talking about it and it's going to stay there forever. The building is basically stay for 50 or more years or, and that's going to be a focus, focus point for that whole area. Plus all the new buildings are similar to theirs than what we have, so.
Do you have any questions or, or no? Um, so I, I, like my colleague, um, I, you know, I, I believe in this project. I was wondering if possibly, and it, it seems different at night than it does during the day, brighter. Um, and that's why I asked about the, so I, I'm a big believer in sort of this California modernist sort of simple design, which I think that has elements of it. Uh, I'm just wondering if it, I, I'm a big believer in natural wood. Um, I really think that sort of is very, very inviting. So this, this project seems brighter and lighter at night and more inviting than it does, uh, the pictures during the day. So I'm just wondering if there's a way to, to make it more consistent with sort of what is thematic and sort of California design element, which is really natural wood. You see that from really all up and down the California coast. It's a very sort of elemental, sort of even crafts in that history of sort of craftsman design in California. So that, that's just something I was thinking. And then I think like my colleague, I share concerns about the sort of arms coming out, um, on the top near the lighthouse element. And I was actually looking up lighthouses to see in California to see how this, this came from. And it seemed like there is a definitely, the top part at least is consistent with some, um, historic lighthouse elements at the top. So I, at least it, um, I, I, I understood that, but I'm, I'm glad I saw this at Lighthouse Point. Cause, um, at first I was trying to think of maybe you guys were looking out towards the Lighthouse of Point Loma. That's what you, your inspiration was. So anyway, um, I, I'd just like to see, maybe there's a way just to, to simplify that and, and maybe even brighten it up a little bit. Um, that's just my, 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 my feedback, given sort of, it's more fitting into sort of a California theme and even Imperial Beach, given the City Mark Project that'll be just on the other side of the building. But, um, I definitely would, um, like to entertain a motion to contend this item, uh, to Wednesday, June 3rd, 2015 at 6:00 PM. Just be given the fact that we have our two colleagues, uh, council colleagues who are very interested, uh, in this, in this project and I know would like to give their, their feedback on it. So is that, it's a motion I would like to, like to entertain a motion. Is there a second? Can we vote on that, please?
Was there a second?
A second, I'm sorry.
I thought you made.
I'm sorry, entertainer, I'm sorry, entertainer motion. All right, please vote.
Motion carried unanimously by those present, Patton and Spriggs are absent.
Great. Well, thank you very much. I want to thank you guys for coming out and we look forward to working with you on this. Now we have item 4.3, Public Hearing and Resolution Number 2015-7586, confirming the diagram and assessment and providing for the levy of the annual assessment in a special maintenance district. Um, declare the public hearing open and I receive report, will receive the report from Public Works Director Hank Levine.
Mayor and council, um, this is for Assessment District 67. Um, staff is recommending approval and adoption of, uh, Resolutions 2015-7586. Uh, in 2000, I'm sorry, in 1992, uh, City Council established, uh, an assessment district for the area that you see on the, uh, screen of, along Palma Avenue from the eastern city limits to the, um, basically Bernardo Shores or to, um, Rainbow Drive. Um, and each year the city, uh, has to, uh, assess, um, the parcels adjacent to that that you see on this diagram. Um, and so tonight we're asking you to assess the, uh, approve this resolution, assess, put the assessments on these properties. I will note that, uh, the, the assessment on the parcels adjacent here totaled about $12,041 and the annual cost, uh, is estimated at $29,000. So the city picks up the rest of that, um, cost for the assessment district. I might also point out that currently the city owns the parcels that are adjacent to Ninth and Highway 75. So in addition to, um, um, the $16,000 and some dollars that you see, that the city would share would be, that parcel, those parcels in that, uh, area would also be added to that. They're part of the $12,041. And I'm open to any questions.
Any questions?
So Mr. Levine, the once then that, um, the Breakwater takes possession of Ninth and Palm, then that amount would be transferred over to them?
Yes, and that, but that would, that would be in the $12,041 piece of it. Uh, the city will still contribute the, uh, somewhere in the neighborhood of $16,000 to $17,000 a year.
Okay. Um, did we have any, uh, um, letters on this? Okay, I did want to just point out though, that we did, I mean, the noticing requirements?
Yes.
Okay. And, um, this, uh, Assessment District is 23 years old and there have been no changes to it since its inception.
That is correct, ma'am.
Thank you. Then I would move, uh, adoption of this resolution.
Just to make sure, just to make sure there's no public, public comments or anything?
Correct. No speaker slips. We're submitted.
Okay, I need to, just to make sure, I need to close the public hearing officially, right? So now do we vote, right? Thank you.
Motion carried unanimously by those present, Spriggs and Patton are absent.
Now we have, we're getting through it by, by the way, everyone. All right. Item 4.4, Public Hearing for an Resolution Number 2015-7587 to adopt Transnet Local Street and Road Program Amendment Number 5. I declare the public hearing open and we receive report from, uh, Public Works Director Levine.
Mayor, council, this, um, is a, uh, update to the Sandag, uh, Transnet, uh, allocation and, and assignment of streets. Two years ago, you adopted a five-year plan and we're required to update that on a minimum of every two years. There have been in this, uh, uh, this update that I'm proposing to you, a, uh, increase, a small increase of, um, revenue, uh, estimated from Transnet, uh, for the next five years. And also, uh, proposal to add Fern Avenue between Ninth and Eleventh Street, uh, consistent with, um, a decision you had made, um, a few council meetings ago to, um, add that as a improvement project adjacent to VIP Elementary School by eliminating or taking the utilities underground and widening the sidewalk and work with the school districts to improve the access and pedestrian safety in, in that block. So this amendment would increase the annual Trans, Transnet allocation by fiscal years pursuant to Sandag's revised Transnet revenue forecast. Uh, reprogram $262,086 of unpaid or carried over Transnet funds from fiscal 2015 and to, into 2016 and add Fern Avenue to the, the list of streets. And before you, on the screen, you see the streets shown in red, um, that are part of, uh, or are those streets that are listed in the Transnet list before you tonight. With that, I'm open to any questions.
Any questions? Do we have any public comment?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Therefore, I am, without the consent of the city council, I'm closing the public hearing. And I would like to entertain a motion to adopt Resolution Number 2015-7587, adopting Transnet Local Street and Road Program Amendment Number 5 and authorizing Public Works Director to submit the resolution to Sandag. Okay, please vote. Why are we just working through this?
Motion carried unanimously by those present, Patton and Spriggs are absent.
And here we go again. Uh, item 4.5, T-Mobile, consideration of regular coastal permit, conditional use permit, CUP 1447, design review case, uh, site plan review and categorical exemption pursuant to SECO guidelines 1530, 15301, for the construction of a wireless telecommunication facility at 800 Seacoast Drive. Um, I declare the public hearing open and I will receive report from Senior Planner Folds.
Mayor, members of the council, uh, staff's recommending that the council adopt the resolution to approve the wireless telecommunication facility at 800 Seacoast Drive. That's Pier South. Rationale is it would provide telecommunication coverage and it would be concealed, uh, and also the designer board recommended approval with a vote of three to zero. Projects in the CMU 2 zone on Pier South. And this is a site plan for the project. Uh, six of the antennas would locate within existing walls at the northern portion of the site. And then there'd be, uh, additional antennas that would surround a laundry chute on the southern portion and some, uh, equipment on the roof. That would be the same height as other existing equipment, wouldn't be any taller, uh, it wouldn't be seen from the street. Uh, these are some elevations of the, the, uh, project. Some of the wall would be replaced with a, a fiber material that would match the building, uh, in design and appearance. And then a little section will be added and I'll show you a plan that shows that better. Again, walls being replaced. And this is the only design element that would be noticed. Right now there's an existing, existing laundry chute that you likely haven't seen, uh, walking by it, but it's there and we were all surprised that it was there. But it's going to be, uh, proposed for this project. It would be covered with, uh, a fiber material that would match the design that's already consistent going up the wall. Uh, so it's likely that it wouldn't cause any design impact, negative design impacts and it would cover up that laundry chute that exists today. So that's the only aesthetic change that would be noticeable. Uh, beyond that, this is another, uh, view coming down the street, existing versus proposed. And then, uh, there's just an existing wall that's going to be replaced. Uh, AT&amp;T had a similar project that was approved last year. Uh, they are going to be requesting an extension. They're going to be doing work on the, on the project, hopefully sometime next year if the extension's approved. They were doing the exact same thing. They're going in the, the parapet walls and they're using the exact same material that's proposed for this project. And this is just an example of a wall that was replaced with the fiber optic material that they're proposing. So again, there would likely be no visual impacts that would be noticeable. So the options for the council is to receive, uh, the report, adopt staff's recommendation or disapprove the project, uh, deny the requested permits by making findings, or to continue the public hearing to a specific future date where we could provide more information to the council.
Thank you. Is there any public testimony?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Any city council discussion? And without the consent of the city council, I'm closing the public hearing. And I would like to entertain a motion to adopt Resolution Number 2015-7587, approving regular coastal permit, CP 14046, conditional use permit, CUP 14047, design review case, DRC 1448, site plan review, SPR 1449, and categorical exemption pursuant to SECO guidelines 15301, for the construction of a wireless telecommunications facility at 800 Seacoast Drive, Imperial Beach.
Second, for a little bit of discussion, if I may.
Oh, sure, okay.
Uh, just a question. Um, the hotel will receive revenue from this, correct?
Uh, yes.
Okay. Does the city receive any revenue? We only receive revenue from cell towers on our own property. Thank you.
Thank you. Please vote.
Motion carried unanimously by those present, Spriggs and Patton are absent.
Now we move on to the report section of the evening. Um, number 5.2. Resolution 2015-7583, awarding Public Works contract to wit RTIP-FY 1415, street improvements and appropriate additional $100,000 gas tax to project number S15-101. And Public Works Director Levine will give a report on the item.
Helped if I get the right one, sorry. Council member, uh, mayor and council members, um, staff is recommending award, um, a contract to, uh, PAL General Engineering Incorporated, um, for the work on, uh, paving, uh, the three streets that you see on the attached, uh, the, on your screen, uh, which includes Rainbow Drive from Palma Avenue to, uh, Highway 75, uh, which will include a Class 2 bicycle striping, um, and improvements on the sidewalk adjacent to the west side of the parcel, of the street, uh, and one block of Fifth Street, uh, between, um, Fern Avenue and IB Boulevard and a short section of Grove Avenue adjacent to the estuary between Fifth and the estuary. It also includes, not shown on this slide, uh, ADA ramps at the corner of Iris and 13th, uh, to provide access from the bus stops there at, um, that intersection to NOLF and the neighboring, uh, parcels from, for the bus stop, the MTS bus stop. It also includes redoing, replacing the driveway pad, uh, from the fire station exit bays, uh, onto highway, onto Imperial Beach Boulevard. The contract, uh, the low bid, uh, was for PAL at $447,864. And the staff is recommending, is, is part of this resolution appropriating $100,000 on the unobligated gas tax fund, um, for a total, uh, project cost of, get it right here, $593,000. With that, I'm, um, elbow, answer any questions?
Any questions or comments?
I don't have any questions, but Mr. Levine or perhaps, uh, City Manager Hall, you could talk about the different pots of money that, you know, we're in our budget process right now. And I want, just want everybody to understand where some of this revenue is coming from, what, and what, that it only can be spent on this type of project.
Yeah, that's a great question. These are not general fund monies. They don't come from the general fund of the city. Rather, they are money that is generated from a gas tax that was voter approved, uh, Transnet. And those funds are, can only be used for street improvement projects, sidewalks, alley improvements and other things related with the transportation tax.
Mayor, if I might.
Yep.
There is $15,000 in there from the, uh, facilities fund for the driveway exit from the fire station.
Good, thank you. Uh, I don't have any public comment?
No speaker slips were submitted.
Great. Um, with that, I would like to entertain a motion to adopt Resolution Number 2015-7583, awarding the contract to PAL General Engineering Incorporated for the RTIP-FY 1415, uh, S15-101 project at a bid price of $447,863.45 and appropriating $100,000 to an unobligated gas tax fund, a project number W15-101. The project includes the repaving and restriping of, of Rainbow Drive for a Class 2 bike lane, repaving of Fifth Street, Imperial Beach Boulevard to Fern Avenue, repaving of Grove Ave- Avenue, Fifth Street to Tijuana Street boundary, construction of ADA compliant ramps at Iris Avenue, 13th Street, and replacement of fire station exit driveway pad. Do I have a motion? Please vote. Thank you, we are moving.
Motion carried unanimously by those present, Patton and Spriggs are absent.
Great, moving on to number, item 5.3, Resolution Number 2015-7582, awarding Public Works Contract to wit Delaware Street Improvements S15-102, and appropriate an additional $880, I'm sorry, $180,000 gas tax to project number S15-102, and Public Works Director Levine will give a report on this item.
Mayor and council, this was a direct, a project that was directed by City Council under the two-year implementation schedule, who start paving the sidewalks that are currently unpaved in the city, and it was opted to, first set of sidewalks to do would be Delaware Avenue, Delaware Street between Elma Avenue and the alley adjacent to the shopping center at Ninth and Palm. We met with the community on two different occasions to talk through what the project plan would be, and I'm of the opinion that we had a unanimous concurrence with those present that we met with, and that is to put an eight-foot wide sidewalk on the east side of the street and just a standard curb on the west side. The reason being is the slope on the west side is such that, to their private properties, is such that if we had to put a side, if we did put a sidewalk in there retaining walls, the access into their property would be very steep, much deeper than it is already. We did get a low bid, we did get a bid also from PAL Dental Engineering for a bid price of $222,260. You had appropriated $100,000 for the design and get this started from gas tax. We used about, let's see, what's, $28,350 of that for the design, and the rest is available for the construction. So staff is, because of the bid and the cost, for staff is recommending appropriating $100,000 of gas tax additional to cover the cost of the, 180, I'm sorry, $180,000 makes sense better, $180,000 to the original $100,000 you appropriated for the design for the construction of this. And I'm open for questions.
Questions or comments?
So this is the same contractor that we just, from the prior item, agenda item?
The same contractor for both was a low bid.
Okay. Any, any considerations that, since they, or could both of these projects be done at the same time to potentially see a reduction in costs, or are they going to be two totally separate projects? I mean, if we have the same contractor in town doing a variety of concrete projects, could they perhaps in any way be consolidated for savings?
I don't, I might ask the attorney, but my belief is, are two separate independent contracts awarded, advertised and awarded separately, I don't think we can go back and renegotiate now that they've got the same contractor doing the two of them. On the other hand, you know, that being said, my guess is that once they mobilize for one, the mobilization for the second will be less expensive, so he'll capitalize on that, but I don't see that we have any avenue of being able to capture any of that he might be gaining out of it.
Well, the reason why I'm bringing it up is if he's doing concrete, if he's doing sidewalk work in one part of the city, and part of the previous contract was, you know, to replace the broken and deteriorated sidewalk in front of the fire station, you know, if he's in town, I mean, that is a relatively small piece of this other agenda item. I'm just looking for some cost savings. And council, do you see a problem in, I mean, can we do that? Can we direct our contractor to do that, or is that all on him?
Well, because these were advertised as two separate projects, to do anything differently, I think you'd have to reject all bids on both of them, re-advertise it as one project, and then it's not certain, you know, where the bids would come in for one project, and I'm not sure if they could, you know, I guess there was a reason why they were bid separately as two separate projects in the first place. I don't know if that's because of the funds of money that were coming out.
Yeah, I was going to say, it is possible that the reason they are the lowest bid is because they looked at that, and that's why they were willing to submit a lower bid in the first place, is they figured there'd be some economies of scale, and that may be the reason why they came in as a low bid. Again, just, I don't know that there's any connection, just thinking out loud.
Okay, so, cost savings to us have already theoretically been realized because they have a low bid already.
Perhaps in theory.
Certainly a possibility.
Okay, okay. I just, I wanted to bring it forward, Mr. Levine, I know you always do your due diligence, but, you know, when we have simultaneous projects going on in the community, if we can certainly look for any cost-saving measures, I'm just always keeping our eyes open. Thank you.
Any other comments?
I just wanted to thank you for, this is a really important project, and this is an area that's historically been underserved in Imperial Beach, and I know connecting it to the new shopping center is going to be really important, there's a lot of seniors that live in that area, and I really thank you for this, and I'd love to see more projects like this. I think a lot of areas that need sidewalks, and making sure they're kind of strategically connected to important areas like this, so, thank you for that. Let's do something, let's launch this project with the neighbors and cut the ribbon, and then let's celebrate the finish of it, and let's, and put that on Facebook and social media so we really get the word out that we're really helping improve the quality of life of our neighborhoods in areas that really need help. So anyway, thank you, I want to thank the city staff for really thinking about how to work with our community and improve the quality of life, so thank you. With that, I would like to entertain a motion to adopt Resolution Number 2015-7582, awarding the contract to PAL Engineering Incorporated for the Delaware Street Improvement Project at a bid price of $222,260, and appropriating $180,000 from gas tax reserved to project number W15-102. Is there a motion? Please vote. Great, we're almost there. I'm sorry, I have to report on the vote.
Motion carried unanimously by those present, Patton and Spriggs are absent.
Mr. Helmers, you have a high standard of efficiency to, and effectiveness to continue after Mr. Levine and Tyler, so, anyway. Number, item 5.4, report on stormwater permit order number R9-2013-001, and development of water quality improvement plans, and Environmental Program Manager Helmer will give a report on the item, on the development of the WIPs and requirements of the new stormwater permit. There's no action required on this item.
Yeah, thank you, council. This is actually just an informative item. The reason why I want to come here is, one, to give you guys another chance to be updated on the new stormwater permit that's been issued down by the Regional Board, but also to give you guys a heads up, at the next council meeting, you'll be asked to authorize us to submit to the Regional Board three important planning documents for stormwater. This is our jurisdictional program, and now our two watershed programs for the watersheds that we belong in. So this is an educational item for you guys, just to get a heads up. You can ask questions now, you can think about, and ask questions at the next council meeting when we were asked to approve these documents for submission. But putting together these stormwater documents, I really do get the privilege to work with all the other regions in San Diego and all the other cities, and our city is by far the most organized when it comes to getting the stormwater program put together, the cooperation among the staff agencies, and our willingness to actually work with the Regional Board and incorporate some of these changes into the, some of the designs in our city. So it makes my job a whole lot easier, I really enjoy working here, partially because I don't have to constantly battle with other departments in the city, so it's a great place to work, it's another plus for the city. So in order to really understand what this new permit is, it's, I think it's important to look back at the past, at the historic permits, and to get an idea of the direction that the Regional Board and the stormwater agencies are going. The first stormwater permits were issued through the city in the 1990s, this was in response to the Clean Water Act Amendment, that was in 1987, which recognized stormwater discharges from municipalities as a point source discharge that needed to be addressed through permit. So the Regional Board started issuing permits, and the first decade of the stormwater permits in the early 1990s established kind of the first stormwater programs in all the cities in San Diego County. The regions all developed urban runoff management plans, but the real outcome of this was, all the agencies started working together to start addressing stormwater pollution, and that led to the 2001 permit, which kind of set the standard for how the Regional Water Board regulates stormwater pollution. 2001 permit defined what is called the maximum extent practical, it's the baseline program that each city needs to implement in order to be in compliance with their stormwater requirements. For the first time, it started requiring significant water quality monitoring for the agencies to monitor not only the receiving waters, that's the waters and the rivers, but also the water that's coming from the MS4s, or the storm drain systems. And it was also the first permit that started to address design standards for new development, and redevelopment projects that go into city. Well, in 2007, that led to the next permit renewal, in the same fashion that these permits go, if water quality improvements aren't being achieved, the outcomes that the state wanted, then they tightened down the regulation a little bit, it's the same thing they did with industry, and now cities are regulated the same way that industries are, in the pipe, whereas if you're not meeting the water quality standards in receiving waters, then the requirements increase each year. So in 2007, the maximum extent practical increased, we had to do more baseline programs. It also expanded to the first time to start introducing the concept of managing at a watershed. So if you remember, the last few permits, we had watershed reports, we had a jurisdictional report, and we had a regional report, we had the whole, it was a lot of paper pushing. So that led to the new permit that was issued in 2013, and for the last two years, we've been working to put together the intent of this new storm permit, which is to start managing completely at a watershed level. Before, everything was kind of done at three different levels, and now everything kind of filters to the watershed level, and we manage our jurisdictional, or our jurisdictional programs are informed by how watershed groups are, evaluate the needs and priorities in the watershed. All the water quality monitoring programs now, instead of being monitored at a regional level, are now, the monitoring assessment is done at a watershed level. And also, it increased requirements for new development projects, so the new projects that are coming into our city are going to have a higher standard, a higher bar to meet. And for the first time, it introduced a concept of alternative compliance for development projects, to pay essentially a mitigation fee for stormwater impacts for whatever development project. This is still being worked out, how it's going to be implemented, but it's something that you're going to, we see it's on the horizon, that there's, on future development projects, there's going to be some type of mitigation fee for stormwater. So I said, the concept of this new stormwater permit is a water quality improvement plan. What is a water quality improvement plan? Well, it's essentially a framework document that's required in this new stormwater permit that establishes all of the planning for the watershed be done through a consultation panel of experts and through a very specific public process. So the intent of the plan is to have an open plan where you decide what is the highest priority pollutant, or what is the biggest problem, how are you going to address it, and then how are you going to monitor and assess how you're going to be addressing it over time? And the intent of the water quality improvement plan is then to filter down to your jurisdictional programs. So in Imperial Beach, we have approximately a two-mile, two-square-mile urban area that falls under the stormwater permit, and we're divided almost in half in our urban area by the San Diego Bay watershed and the Tijuana River watershed. In the San Diego Bay watershed, we decided through this process that the highest priority pollutant that we're going to address is going to be trash along the bayfront, and it's going to be water quality, it's swimable waters, so it's bacteria along the beach. These are all things that are already priorities for our city, all things are already working together. And in Tijuana River, the highest priority through this public process was determined to be sedimentation in the main Tijuana River and siltation in the Tijuana estuary. So the intent of going through this process is then to inform our jurisdictional programs, which have been being updated simultaneously as we develop these water quality improvement plans. Our jurisdictional programs actually identify 76 water quality improvement strategies that we implement to be in compliance with the permit, but also to address these priorities that we identify through this water quality improvement plan process. And it covers everything from our community development, how they review and condition projects, to actually building the project, the construction management side of it. And then, once things are built, that falls more back on the public work side, where we're have to make sure that best management practice for stormwater are being implemented at the existing developed sites. So these are at the residential, the commercial, industrial, and our own municipal facilities. Include education outreach, which our city maintains numerous partnerships with NGOs throughout the region, additional monitoring assessment at a jurisdictional level, and a code enforcement division that specifically only does stormwater code enforcement. We have our own code enforcement, we do, but the permit requires us to have specifically stormwater code enforcement. So with all that, this really was just a heads up. In a nutshell, that, the main documents that we're going to be updating in the next council meeting is our WQIPs for San Diego Bay and Tijuana River, and our jurisdictional program. And I'll probably go into more detail, I'll probably focus on our jurisdictional program at our next city council meeting for you guys to authorize us to submit it to the Regional Board. Once it gets submitted to the Regional Board, there's another 30-day public commenting period. After the three-day public commenting period, we will get comments either back from the public or from the Regional Board, and we'll have 60 days to incorporate any changes that we get from this commenting period. So coming up in the next council meetings, we're also going to have a new regional co-permit MOU, that's how we're going to be cost-sharing all this work, because in the San Diego Bay front, we have 10 agencies in that one watershed, and in Tijuana, we only have three, so it's a little easier to deal with, but we all have to share together and work well together to share costs. You will also be, because the city of Imperial Beach is the lead agency for both Tijuana River and the San Diego Bay, we're going to bring back work plans and budgets for each fiscal year for you guys to see and approve. Even though we're cost-sharing this with all of the other agencies, we're only, for San Diego Bay, we're 2% cost share, for Tijuana River, we're about a 15% cost share of it. And the other agencies pay the rest of their share for it, but because we're the lead and we want council to be up to speed on the work plans and budgets. Also, we're going to have to do a stormwater ordinance update on it. I want to do it all simultaneously, but in good old Regional Board fashion, they're changing the rules already, so our existing amended municipal codes ready to bring next, the next council meeting has to hold off until the Regional Board has decided the exact changes they want to make on it. And then in August, sometime in August, we're also going to implement a new BMP design, or have you guys approve a BMP design manual that will become effective in December. This is replacing our SUSUM chapter, our SUSUM is our ordinance chapter 8.32. It was always a confusing, it stands for Standard Urban Stormwater Mitigation Plan, it was always confusing acronym, so the Regional Board decided, well, now we're going to call it a BMP design manual. So we're, makes more sense, but the rules are changing, so requires us to update our stormwater ordinance, and you'll be seeing that in the summer as well. Heads up on a number of items that'll be seen.
Great, thank you for that. Any questions or comments?
Thank you, Mr. Helmers, I do have a couple of questions. The cost to update our stormwater ordinance, you have any idea what that's going to be?
I'm working with the city attorney on it, I mean, I, I don't know.
The one good thing is there, obviously, we represent multiple agencies, and so the associate in our office who's helping, Chris, is helping the other agencies too, so, you know, our rates are really low, that's a good thing for the city too, but in terms of, I think that's the only thing, is just the legal services related to the ordinance.
Okay, okay.
But, and you have Chris, who knows a ton, so the legal work is less than it would be if you were working with a different, you know.
Right, okay. And the changes from the Regional Board, are they, that you're anticipating, are they really big changes, or not so big?
It's really small, it's the definition of priority development project. It has a big impact on what is, I mean, it's not going to impact us, but it impacts some larger development projects. It's not a big word change, but it's a poor enough word, it's a definition that you a definition that you can't move forward without having the exact definition that the regional board decides upon.
Okay. Chris, if you could just quickly talk a little bit about the mitigation fees. Do you see that happening a lot here in the city of Imperial Beach, or mainly in much larger cities that they're going to be able to? And have any idea what those, how that language is going to be written?
It's still being worked out. Right now, it doesn't seem feasible for a small agency such as us to move forward with this alternative compliance-type program. What it really applies for the larger development projects that, the subdivision-type projects, that would want to pay a fee instead of having to design every part of property to meet their specific retention and flow reduction requirements for each site. So, in a lot of cases, it makes a lot more sense to treat the pollutants leaving site somewhere else downstream. And if you can put towards, money towards a project that's going to restore a creek bed, for instance, that would have the capacity to retain and filter the storm drains from a project upsite, it makes a whole lot of sense to do it. And that's the reason why it's attractive to the regional board, that commissioners on the regional board, like, well, there's higher, more efficient ways to address some of these project runoff. And it's from larger restoration projects that we don't have funding for. For us, it requires a jurisdiction to manage the program and to ensure that whatever offsite mitigation site gets built, be built within a certain period of time, which is, at this time, is not feasible for a small agency. We couldn't put the capital upfront to build this, and then have ourselves reimbursed over time by the future development. And it also only applies to priority development projects, which we only get a handful of them a year in this town. So, most likely, if we do it, it would be part of a regional watershed program.
Okay. So, could those fees be transferred to another city then, or another, or does it, or would they have to stay in the originating city?
The intent of the regional board is to have a transfer to other regions, and even transfer outside of watersheds. So, there's a lot of talk that, well, the Tijuana River needs a lot of funding and resources, and there's more development that's happening inland, outside of Tijuana River watershed. This is a cost mechanism to bring funding resources to an area that needs it. That's been stated by the regional board's executive officer. The other cities are kind of shaking their, well, I don't want any of my mitigation funds going to outside of my city. And I suspect most councils feel that way. But at this time, it's broad enough where you can transfer funds from watersheds, outside of cities even.
So, this mitigation fee could get pretty political, couldn't it?
Oh, I suspect it's going to go through courts before it ever gets put into place. And there's issues of, I don't know, 218 and rulings on it, this is even, is this a tax, or is it a fee? Then that hasn't even been decided.
Okay. Just one last question. Historically, do we get many public comments during the comment period?
In the San Diego Bay as a watershed, yes, a lot. Tijuana River, not so much, because a lot of the work goes through the recovery team efforts, and the stormwater component is such a small fraction of a percent of the entire watershed, that it doesn't have the interest to say things happen in San Diego Bay.
What's the nature of the comments?
Uh, getting, a lot of it is getting geared towards the city of San Diego, and having the city of San Diego have better maintenance of their channels, of areas that are being neglected. A lot of things that we're actually doing in this community, and maybe that's one of the pluses, why we don't get a lot of comments towards our areas, because our outfalls of our channels look nice. You know, we have a program that hits everything above and beyond what's being required.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Helmers, very much.
Any other comments?
I just want to testify to that. First, I want to thank you and your team for working on this. I know it's a lot of work, and you're also doing the other work, which is really trying to think about how to prevent beach closures from what's going on in the Tijuana River and south of the border, on a whole multiple areas, series of areas. But I've been shocked a couple times where I sent photos of storm drains, just filled with garbage, just in San Diego. And, you know, I acknowledge San Diego's a big city, and they're working diligently with their Blue Water Task Force or whatever, but I was shocked about how much garbage and how filthy their storm drains were. It's just off Saturn Boulevard, Boulevard behind the Shell Station. So, we're light-years ahead of our neighbor to this, to the north and east. But I tell you what, it's up to everybody when they see those storm drains full of trash, take a picture of them and email them. You can email them to me or Chris, and we'll make sure they get to a city council member or the San Diego Stormwater Team, because it's really, really important to do that. So, for me, to summarize this, this is a big picture, because like, really, it's really hard to follow all the acronyms. We need to conserve and restore every inch of our watersheds. That's what we need to think about. And I think we're working on that. And then, number two, you're going to have to work with your colleagues in the recovery team, and this whole EPA and the IBWC, to make sure we do everything we can to make sure that in Mexico, we have the infrastructure and restoration efforts and management, and at San Antonio, and from IB to Rosarito, so that we really do some, you know, technological fixes to fix the infrastructure. And then finally, we need to make sure that we're using every inch of water, that we don't dump any more sewage in the ocean, that we're doing stormwater capture, and we're really being a lot more strategic and smart and cost-effective about reusing water, period. That this era of just unlimited, limitless water going into the ocean is something we can't afford anymore. So, anyway, that's it. Thank you for your effort on this. All right. Moving on to item 5.5, this is a little bit like Groundhog Day. Resolution number 2015-7580 to award professional service contract to AMEC Foster Wheeler for consultant support to implement the water quality improvement plan for the San Diego Bay watershed management area and environmental program manager Helmer will give a report on the item.
All right, we made, this is the final agenda item. So, but this one has to do with our San Diego Bay water quality improvement plan. As I mentioned, we're now taking over the lead as the lead agency managing San Diego Bay water quality improvement plan process. That includes ten agencies total in the San Diego Bay, and it requires consultant support in order to manage this big group, to do water quality monitoring that's required in the permit, to do assessment of all the data that we're collecting, and to do periodic updates and to lead public meetings. So, as part of taking the lead, I went up for a professional service agreement for a proposal, and we only received one bid on it. I mean, granted, this is very specialized work, and the proposal we got back was from AMEC Foster Wheeler, who was actually the consultant who is developing the plan. The plan's still being finalized right now, who is developing the plan, and with a team of, I think, nine sub consultants on their proposal. And this work is to continue through the duration of the rest of the stormwater permit, and it's just consultant support, as needed, support to implement the water quality improvement plan. I will be coming back to you with a fiscal year sixteen budget for you, work plan and budget for this consultant to start working on, probably coming up in the next month. Because these regulations are still being developed, and the plans are still being written, I don't have a work plan or even a budget yet for you guys to approve and to see. But I do have a consultant on task, and our consultant is Matt Rich here. He's actually here in the audience, he's an Imperial Beach resident. So, he knows a lot about our town, and will work very well for us. And with that, I'll take any questions.
Questions?
What's the cost?
Approximately three hundred and fifty to four hundred thousand a year on it. Imperial Beach is about a two percent cost share on it, but we're also collecting a ten percent contract management fee from everybody else for doing the work. So, it actually helps us out a little.
Do you have those numbers specifically?
I put it in your fiscal analysis session. I don't have an exact budget yet for you guys to approve. Like I said, I'll be coming back with an exact work plan and budget for you guys to look at.
Where was the fiscal now? The fiscal now?
So, it costs our approximately three hundred and fifty thousand a year for the watersheds, each watershed.
So, we're essentially, it's a net of eight percent, is that right?
Yeah.
Okay. So, make sure it's not really costing us anything. Okay. Any other questions or comments?
I just find it amazing that the little city of Imperial Beach is the lead on these things. It's just, it's great testimony to you, Mr. Helmers, certainly, and, you know, the little city that could.
Yeah, I wanted to comment, yeah, you're doing a great job. You're obviously a fountain of knowledge, and understand how to manage the system and work with Dave Gibson at the Water Board. I want to thank you for that. And, you know, you're working on multiple levels, but you've, you and your team, and thank really Public Works Director Levine, have done a great job on this. And, you know, I've seen the evolution of stormwater management in Imperial Beach, and it's just light-years ahead of most of our neighbors. And I think your attitude, the attitude, Director Levine is just exemplary. So, I want to thank you guys for that. And it's a pleasure to have, to be a mayor of a city that really gets it about water quality, and more importantly, just working proactively with our, the private sector in our community and other cities, and the regional board on making sure we really have best management practices. I think that's a great, great way of looking at it. So, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Great. I would like to entertain a motion to adopt resolution number 2015-7580 to award professional service contract to AMEC Foster Wheeler for consultant support to implement the water quality improvement plan for the San Diego Bay watershed management area. Is there a motion?
No.
Please vote.
Motion carried unanimously by those present. Spriggs and Patton are absent.
And before I close the meeting, I want to thank all the city staff, because I look around, I think, well, that school board member, Chris Brown, is here, but she's also really a city staff. All our public servants, we have the consultant here, really the last ones left. Thank to all of you. It's probably the busiest agenda that I've had since I started, and I want to thank the city staff for helping us move through this, all the people who are commenting on it, and my colleagues on the council for asking great questions and their leadership. Thank you very much. And with that, we adjourn the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Laurie. It was a pleasure to serve you this evening. You were great on the building. Well, we're a great team. You were great, yeah. Thank you. There was so much going on, like...